To us and we have that in our package. Um, so I guess at this point, I want to make sure to ask the applicants. Have any other questions regarding those items? That we were just talking about.
Peter, Peter, sorry to interrupt. I'm just trying, I just noticed, I think Rich Baker has now joined, so that may be, that may be timely. You might want to just confirm. I see his name popping up. Sorry to interrupt, but.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Thank you, Julie. Hi, Rich. You don't have to come off mute if you don't want. You can just give a wave and know that you hear us. Yep, okay. All right, yep. We hear you or see you anyway. I think we're good to go. So we have five voting members for meeting this evening. So just want to make sure relative to those list of seven items. I'm sorry. Nine items, I apologize. That were submitted. Were there any? Questions? Um, that you would have about those? I'm looking for the, do the applicants have any questions or anything? No, okay.
I, I'm sorry, I still can't raise my hand, Peter. I have a, I have a quick question. It's not about those items. I don't know if it's appropriate. I know there was some draft findings of fact. And there was a couple of small corrections to that. I assume those will be adjusted after the meeting.
Say so. I know.
I'm assuming. Mr. Hodgson's did those.
Actually, no, but to answer your question, those are simply a draft. So that people can have them for discussion purposes.
Sure.
They may be added to or deleted. I think what Peter will get into in a minute when, when they get into deliberation is that's the sort of outline, although it's a very broad outline.
Right.
To then be added to or deleted from.
Right. Okay, just a small couple of technical things like in the description of the services that doesn't include boat repair. Little things.
Mr. Chair, also on that subject, also on that subject, Mr. Chair, if I could. I, I'm not sure. I think it was missed. I'm told Mr. Seal may have prepared those proposed findings. It's an extremely, I don't know how many hours that took him to do it, but it's an extremely helpful template to, to, to use, and I assume you will be using it. As, as you go through it, we, just following up on what Samantha said. We do, and I think Jeff in particular has a few comments as, as you go through that. We just want to reserve the opportunity to comment on those as, as you do approach them. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Yes, and I wanted to just say thank you very much for all the hard work that was done to get us to this point. The, the board has put in numerous hours and it's it's very much appreciated by me. I know that and, and I know the town manager has said the same thing. So thank you, everybody who has done that. So. Thank you. So let's move on to the next part. So if there are no more comments at this point, I would say that we are ready to close that portion and head into deliberations. Before I do that, I see a hand up, George.
Um, well, I would like an opportunity to ask the applicant a few more questions on the newest submittals. I don't know about other board members, but that would seem to be appropriate. So we're not going into the findings and deliberations on ma- making some assumptions that may or may not be accurate.
George, I'm glad you said that because I had briefly mentioned that before, and this is the time to do so. So thank you for doing that. So. So before we close, so if there are any questions for the applicants at this time, let's get into those. So George, do you have any questions about that?
I, I do, and I have a number of them and I certainly don't want to monopolize. So let me just ask my first question and then maybe others can ask whatever questions they have and then I, because I do have a number of questions about some of the newest submittals that have just come in with regard to the stormwater management plan and the phosphorus export calculations. But before we get to that, I wanted to ask anybody from the applicant with respect to the uses of the app, you know, that are being proposed, particularly the boat tours and the boat rentals. If you could elaborate on, on those, and in particular, my, my question is does the property on the other side of the Hulan Road, is that going to be used at all in the providing of those services?
Sure, I'll feel that.
I asked that only because that lot is not listed on your application.
It's a total delivery pickup scenario. The bulk of our boat tours are generated through the Village Inn Restaurant. They'll have customers and they'll say, hey, call up, say Sean, we've got some people that'll want to go around the lake and so we'll, we'll, we'll do, run them around. But as far as going off the docks, we lost that case, George, and, and we can't do that and you know that and we do.
Thank you, Sean.
Boat rentals are the same. All the boat reservations, rentals and reservations are done either on the phone or on the computer, on the computer. And we now either meet them at the public launch or we actually have a service where we will deliver the boats to their camps.
Thank you.
Are there, are there any other questions? For the applicant? Rich, I see your hand up. So Richard, I just want to make sure you know that we can't hear you yet. So you're still on mute, so. Okay. Yep, I think.
I have two questions or points or whatever I'd like to deal with. And the first one is the boat storage as proposed off the Red Oaks Lodge Road. I think the site plan basically says on existing ground. And I drove by that and there's a basically a bunch of rocks and some stumps and stuff. I was wondering if that truly is going to be done on the ground as it sits right now. Minus any trees that are in the way that to be cleared off. And so I don't know the answer to that. Are you hearing me, Peter?
Rich, I am. I don't know Sean or Samantha.
Well, I was kind of looking for my engineer to jump in there, but okay, so there is a small area down there where we store some boats that is right now raw ground. We literally, if I had to take the boats in there with my pickup truck, I couldn't do it only because I own a four-wheel drive tractor. I'm, am I able to get them back there? We were talking today about how we were going to have to reseed some area. And I, and it just, I'm, I'm a little bit miffed, but yeah, if I guess I have to remove rock, level things out and seed it down rather than letting Mother Nature run her course as far as revegetating land, but I'm not sure I'm answering your question. Can you redirect, please?
Well, yeah, it basically the, the site plan showed, I think, I don't know the exact terms, that on existing land as is or something like that. And I didn't know, looking at it, it was like, how the heck are they going to store very many boats?
We can't.
Rich, that was, that was requested at the last meeting by the planning board that we put that on there because there are some boats there, but that's not intended to be a primary storage area. A bunch of boats, we moved them across the street when we lost the other case where we had boats there. We put our personal boats and a couple of others down there. So what's down there right now is just personal boats. It's not, the intention is not to have that be a primary storage area, but the, the planning board did request that we show that on the site plan because there were some boats there. And so there, there's no intention to gravel that, to put any impervious surface on there. And the intention is that with the, the Seven Lakes Alliance and Mr. Allen's recalculation, so we will add some veg- additional vegetation in that end of the property. But there is no intention to make it more impervious. It's not a primary storage area. It, it's not something we necessarily need, but we will use if, if we need it on the site plan.
Okay.
Does that make sense? Does that answer your question? It's not.
Yeah.
It's overflow and it's our personal boats right now.
Okay, okay. The other question, it's not a question. It's, it's one that I believe and it it relates to the findings of fact that I thought maybe was I either misunderstood or the finding of fact needs to be adjusted, but it talked about the waste paint and solvents. And the, I know they're not large quantities, but basically the, the findings of fact said it went to the town transfer station and the town has a policy of accepting those materials. Let's see. From businesses need to get rid of small quantities of this waste oil paint. And I believe, and I spoke to Mike Hudson at the DEP. And that is illegal for small business, whether small business or big business, is take waste paint and solvents or whatever that you have and throw in a dumpster. They have to be treated as hazardous waste and sent to a hazardous waste facility. And so I just my understanding is that that's the case. And if so, we gotta, I would say we have to at least have a condition and say that waste paints and solvents be handled in a manner satisfactory to, or meeting the, the standards for EPA and DEP.
Rich, can I interject? I'm not really sure how that verbiage got there because that's not the case. I don't haul anything up to the land, up to our transfer station. I'm a lazy son of a gun. I have a dumpster. I let the truck come in here and haul it all off. It goes to Norwich Walk. When I read that myself, I was like, boy, I don't remember saying.
Yeah, yeah. You and I had the same understanding of what happens because I didn't think you said it went to the transfer station.
No. And I would, I would add that it, the conversation about things getting put in the dumpster was very empty containers. I think Sean stated that some of these quarts of paint are, you know, are $300. And they, they don't, they get wiped dry.
Yeah, well, let me just say, if they're empty containers, I think you're fine.
They're empty.
If the stuff that isn't empty or might be a half a can or something, it may not be large quantities, but I believe that that needs to be treated as for disposal purposes as hazardous waste.
Anything that's hazardous waste is treated as hazardous waste. I can tell you, we do not waste materials. It's, um, kept until it's used.
Yep. Okay, those were my questions.
Okay. Thanks, Rich. Appreciate that. Do any of the planning board members have questions about, at this time? Go ahead, George.
If we could turn to, and, and these questions are, are for Jeff Allen. If we could turn to exhibit R, the Stormwater Management Plan. I have two questions for you, Jeff. One, sort of a big picture question that I've been struggling with ever since really our first meeting. And, and the second is a question about the the detailed drawing that you provided in the last revision of the site plan. So my big question is, I'm having a hard time understanding how by converting the 5,500 square feet of impervious surface to pervious and the 1,200 feet that needs to be revegetated, that's part of your calculations. How that gets us to pre-development stormwater flows? And, and the reason I'm confused or one reason, my wife would say there are plenty of reasons, but one reason is that that the area that has been developed is considerably bigger than just the 5,500 square feet and, and the sum with 1,200 square feet. You have the entire the, a portion of the driveway that's been developed and is impervious. You have the area that's sort of to the north of where the boat storage area, which is compacted gravel and that's impervious. So I'm having to, I'm struggling with how only you know, 6,700 square feet of pervious surface makes up for a much larger area of impervious surface.
Sure. Well, first of all, if your ordinance doesn't really say when pre-development is. So I was using some, some of it, the DEP standards for stormwaters look at 1997 is the, or 2005 is the, the cutoff date. And so I looked at some of the buildings, the driveway, the parking area in front of the you know, several areas were pre-existing and so we're not subject to stormwater regulations as far as DEP goes. I assume the towns would be similar to DEPs. The area. What I did was, was take a, a measurement of what's there now and determined what was running off that. Actually, I didn't, didn't make a specific calculation as far as some of the CFS runoff because in the earlier meeting, I, I think it was maybe the first or second meeting, we had some of the board members commented that just having flow arrows were adequate to describe where the water is going. And so I, I understand the area about, or the quantity about pre-development being had, the postal has to be less than pre-development. But what we decided, or what I assumed we decided was that by revegetating these areas, that would make enough difference that would meet that standard. As you know, DEP considers gravel to be impervious. Some of the stones and stuff that are out back, that, that real bony type soil. They don't assume any runoff goes from that because there's so many voids beneath the stone that drains into the ground. So that, you know, I talked with Jeff Dennis and a couple of the folks at, at DEP, they didn't have any way to quantify that. And so I described to them how in a boneyard like that, essentially water just percolates into the ground. The area behind the garage or behind the workshop area was obviously gravelled in and being used for parking. So by revegetating that, less water runs off lawn than runs off gravel. And so that's, that was my, my intention there.
So, so the fact that the square footage doesn't mesh is not relevant?
It just has to be less than pre-development and it's, you know, without going, you know, doing a calculation is very difficult because what, what's there now is hard to determine what was there before. So by revegetating this, there is less impervious surface that has a higher runoff number, a higher runoff rate. So an improvement like that makes the, makes that number less runoff. Also, the, the magic 5,500 square feet and 1,200 square feet out back was derived from the phosphorus calculations that, you know, we can discuss later. So that, that was the, the driving factor in the stormwater analysis was meeting the phosphorus balance.
Okay. I think I understand. My more detailed question has to do with the typical detailed drawing that you provided in the site plan for the reinforced turf. When I compare that against the installation instructions or guidance from the manufacturer of the GeoGrid from Tensar Triax GeoGrid that you are at least tentatively proposing. It doesn't seem to mesh. The GeoGrid manufacturer, and I'm, I'm on page seven of their installation instructions calls for six inches of aggregate on top of the GeoGrid to protect the GeoGrid. But the detailed drawing includes, and this is one of the errors, by the way, in the findings. I don't know if it's the one Samantha was referring to, but it's four inches of topsoil. And I'm just concerned that topsoil, which of course has a high percentage of of silt and clay in it, not to mention organic matter versus aggregate, very, very two different types of soils, very different physical properties. The manufacturer calls for, if you're going to use less than six inches, they want you to get their permission, basically. So can you reconcile that for me?
Sure. It's actually quite easy. The GeoGrid, the Tensar product is primarily used for roadways. It's not hasn't been used a lot for parking areas like this simply because and because of that, they want to have a, a product where you'll have some stone on the bottom. They put, you put the grid over the top of it like this. I can see, like, you see my hands. And then the stones on top lock into that grid and, and use that grid to provide better resistance from pushing sideways. You know, the rutting and stuff you'd get on a road. Where we're using it here, one, one of the recommendations I had in the I think it's in the detail is that you'd be rototilling that ground up first and then setting the, the GeoGrid on top of that. Setting the GeoGrid on top of that will, would drive it down into the stone some. So you'd get some locking together and then putting the soil on top of that, the, the loam for the lawn. We're not building a road. This is, this is simply a parking spot that a few times a year, you're going to be moving a boat on or off. You know, it's not going to receive the traffic that you would with a road. So I, I like the design that I have. I could be convinced to, you know, potentially pull off some of the, the gravel that's there, put the grid down and put the, the gravel back on top of it. But I, I think what I've designed is adequate for what the use is here.
If, if I may, the, my concern is with just putting loam on top, as I said, the physical properties of loam is such that that's going to get pretty squishy. And, and you're going to squ- and there's even a warning in, in the installations instructions from the manufacturer to ensure that that doesn't happen. For example, on wet soils, you know, in, in their case, they're, they're describing not getting mud on it during the course of instruction, or construction. The I'm concerned that the topsoil is going to get compacted and squished into, into the grid, not adequately protected structural integrity. So that's where I'm coming from.
I'm not sure. You, you broke up there, son, Mr. Seal.
Can you hear me, Jeff? You've broken up now.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, you, you broke up a little bit there. I'm sorry. You, you froze up on my end. Yeah, you're concerned about mud getting into the grid and, and blinding that up. That's one reason I chose this product is because it has relatively large openings. The openings are probably three quarters of an inch triangular shaped. And so that would give you great porosity through the the grid for water migrating down into the ground. That, and I know that was one of the concerns that I looked at earlier today. Is, is water going through there? So it's, you know, I think it's a, it's a good product. I know, did note that on the other Geo- reinforced turf that has been approved in town, they didn't have a GeoGrid at all. They just had loam on top of gravel. And I'm, you know, because this is being used more from vehicles than, or you know, by backing boats back and forth on it. I, I like putting in the GeoGrid just to reinforce that and make sure the ruts are minimized.
Thank you. Peter, I also have some questions about the phosphorus export calculations, given some of the latest information we've been provided just today, but why don't you ask, see if the other boards members have any questions about stormwater phosphorus first?
Surely, yes. So before moving on to those, the calculations, do other board members have other questions? And anybody?
Peter Sargent.
Yep, go ahead.
I, I was just, I had some question there as to how adequate this design is, but the gentleman there from the engineering company. He has made a good point. It's the traffic will be a lot less than what it's designed for. It's designed for roadwork, high traffic. But this is, traffic will be a lot less. So I think, oh, my concern has been really mitigated. I think what the design we have now makes sense because the, the degree of traffic will be a lot less what the, it can handle otherwise on a, on a road.
Thanks, Pete, for that comment. Any other board members have questions at this time? I had one, if you don't mind. It, it has to do with under the, I'm on page nine of the installation instructions from the manufacturer talks about special considerations and maybe it's nothing. So just let me know. But they're talking cold weather and they talked about sub-freezing temperatures is, may be less impact resistance. Is that at all a concern for how this is going to be implemented for you? Because we know it gets cold.
Yeah, it, I, I, I think that is a good point. But when it's cold, they aren't going to be moving boats back and forth on it. It's, nobody's going to pull their boat out and go boating in February. So that's I don't, I don't think that's a concern in this instance, but that, that is a good point.
Thank you. Seeing no other hands raised, George, can we go to the calculations discussion or questions that you had?
Yeah, thank you. So again, for you, Jeff. The, well, first off, before I get going, I just want to make sure we're all on the same page. In the submissions, the application submissions, it's points made, but I just want to emphasize or remind everybody that the phosphorus standard in our ordinance is outdated. But that's, but the applicants have used a more conservative standard. They're using the DEP standard, which is more up to date for the current water quality conditions of Great Pond. So just so that as we're discussing the details of the calculations, we keep that in the back of our heads because it makes, makes it more conservative. But Jeff, to get my first question about this is the, I want to make sure, this is not my area of expertise, but I just want to make sure I'm understanding sort of the view from 30,000 feet of how this, these calculations, the net effect of these calculations and in particular, and this kind of stems from your a letter that you had submitted with the very first rendition of this application as well as some of Sean's testimony and, and at the hearing. And that, it has to do with the impact, the, the importance of the undeveloped pervious portion of the left 11.9 acres. And what influence it would have on the phosphorus calculations if some of that was if some of that was either sold or developed in the future? And whether the calculations would have to be recalculated and possibly more treatment provided?
And that's exactly what happened is the first iteration of this, there was 12 and a half acres or something like that. I don't remember the exact number. But a parcel was sold. And so that, between the first version of the application and the second version of the application in October, I had to go back and recalculate what was the new phosphorus allocation. I can give you like a 30,000 foot view from the way DEP does this, if, if you're interested in that.
Sure, why not?
DEP has, I don't want to tie this up any longer than they have to. DEP has loading allowed per acre for each lake in the state. And so you take the total number of acres in your parcel. You have to subtract out the amount of wetlands and the amount of steep areas that are more than, I think it's a 20% slope. And what you have left is the acres that you can count for your allocation for your particular piece of land. In this case, as you said, it's about 11.9 acres. You multiply that 11.9 acres times the DEP allocation for your particular water body, for your lake. And doing that, we came up with 0.93 pounds a year that we can dump into the lake. And that, that number is different for every site, different for every lake. You know, if I had a 19 or an 11.9 acre site on some other lake, my allocation would not be 0.93. This is unique to this site. So that's the budget of how much you can dump in completely. Now, the way DEP goes to the next worksheet, and I'm just cheating by looking at my worksheets, is you specify what development you have on your site. And you have to look at what's on there again after 1997. Because this, that's when the phosphorus law went into effect. Everything before that is pre-jurisdictional. And so we look at the buildings that we have on the site, the amount of landscaped or paved area that's there now. And each of those numbers, or each of those, the roof, gravel, lawns, all have a different export factor associated with them. And what the, the Seven Lakes folks found was I'd made a mistake on one of the, on the amount running off a roof. I had 0.3 pounds per year per acre of roof. And it should have been 0.5. So I corrected that today. Because roofs are up in the air, they're, they're pretty clean. You don't have a lot of phosphorus running off them. The only phosphorus would be from atmospheric deposition from dust. On the opposite end of the scale are gravel roads. Gravel roads are fairly dirty. When you get water, rain running off the roads, you have a higher amount of sediment. And sediment contains the phosphorus export. So that number was 1.75. And you go through, the lawns are less than a roof because lawns actually use the phosphorus as fertilizer to grow. You add all this up with what your development is, and you come up with how much phosphorus is being exported from your site. And in this case, we came up with, or now come up with 1.8, 1.085 pounds per year. Remembering back from earlier, we calculated their budget was 0.93 pounds per year. So obviously, we have to do something to eliminate the phosphorus running off our site. The next worksheet, number three, allows you to say you're going to put in these treatment systems, BMPs, best management practices that will treat water running off the site before it runs off the site. And so you can use buffers, you can use structures such as wet ponds, you know, other more complicated engineered structures, which it's not really possible to use on this. And the, the other alternative is to re-vegetate areas that are not, you know, that you don't need to have gravel. Because if you can change it from gravel runoff to a lawn, lawn has less export than gravel does. So that's what I had done by re-vegetating the logging road out back and the shop storage area. Again, I, I mentioned in my email today that whether it's the, the, the top half of Form 3 is mitigation credit for pre-existing sources being eliminated. And I thought by covering something up with lawn, you know, covering a gravel surface up with lawn, I would eliminate that gravel surface. The folks at Seven Acres said, well, no, that's more of a treatment, a BMP. I, again, I'm not sure that they're right, but I don't know that they're wrong. It's, it's, it's difficult to discern whether that's a treatment or that's a removal. To be conservative again, I took their number, their suggestion of treating that as a new BMP. And when you do that, you have to, you can't take full credit for it. You're already giving a 50% modifier when you do this. So you're losing 50% off the top, and then you'll have to figure a treatment factor in. So that takes more of it away. Anyway, bottom line is we ended up still not with, with what we've proposed before, the 5,500 square feet and the 1,200 square feet. We didn't have enough to meet our phosphorus budget. So what I've proposed today, maybe I'm jumping ahead in the analysis, but is to create some additional vegetated surface out back. Because, you know, that area is gravelled and rocky and not, you know, not a, you know, is, is a potential source for runoff because we're, Sean has to drive through there with his tractor and depart the boats. So if we create some of that area as lawn, again, to re-vegetate that, we can find to make the balance work. So I did that. The magic number that seemed to work was about another 7/100ths of an acre, which is about 3,000 square feet, a little bit more than 3,000 square feet. So that's why I proposed that. So in total, out back, instead of re-vegetating 1,200 square feet, we're going to be re-vegetating about 4,400 square feet. That's a tenth of an acre. So then when you, when you balance that out on the spreadsheet four is just kind of a summary that puts it all together. And says, we know our budget was 0.93. Before we do anything, we're putting in 1.085. We're going to seek or have this mitigation credit by re-vegetating areas. So I'm removing some there. And so my net phosphorus export now is 0.092, which is less than what the budget is. If we were to sell off some land, that, you bring up a good point, Mr. Seal. If we were to sell off some land in the future, we may end up re-vegetating additional areas to rebalance that budget. So this, this is the budget for now. But again, so any sales of land or, or even purchases of land, you may, if you bought more land, you could have a higher phosphorus budget and be able to do things without any other treatment. I don't know, maybe that's too, are into the woods.
I would jump in right there if I can, in the fact that we are actively seeking to acquire more square, more square footage.
Thank you.
Thank you to you both. Thank you, Jeff, for that explanation. It helps actually quite a bit. The, I almost hate to bring this up, but, and this is a question for you, Peter, but I haven't seen any memo from Jeff that came in today. Have you? Has any of the board members?
I don't think so. I was looking at email from Jeff. That was today. If I'm not mistaken, so it's from Jeff. It was sent today at 2:57 with the, and that's, Jeff, is that the right one?
Yes, yeah, that was the one I sent out in response to the, the Seven, Seven Lakes email.
I got that too, Peter.
Okay.
Okay, so that's on me. I, I didn't, I haven't seen it because I haven't looked at emails since about 2 o'clock.
Yeah, I think I copied you, sir. I'm, you know.
Yeah, this is Peter Sargent. I hadn't seen it, but I've had time to look, look at it. It's got home about 4 o'clock. So I, I appreciate the explanation. It was a good question, George.
Yep, very good.
All right, and one last question, Peter, and, and I apologize for going back to the stormwater. But I, I thought I should ask Jeff if, what has, give him an opportunity to rebut if he so chooses the comments from Seven Lakes Alliance regarding their discussions with DEP. And this goes to what we discussed earlier about whether or not the detailed design provides adequate infiltration. And I'm, I'm speaking specifically, and maybe you address this in your memo? And if I, if you do, I apologize, but in paragraph three?
No, I did not address anything other than phosphorus in my email today. In a number, in paragraph two, they talk about stormwater systems must retain or retain. And I think I've discussed that earlier, that I'm not sure what the 2013 number is. That, I, I understand that represents what they had some aerial photos for. But that's not a, a DEP important date. So the, let me see, the question they had, number three, was about using the BMP. This is a slightly different grid than I had proposed to use. You have the information on the Triax. This grid is, is, I've seen this used before, and I've seen it used on entryways to ball fields, oddly enough. This is like a base, a gravel base that you put down, and then this plastic grid you put on, much like I'd proposed. But then you, this is more of a three-dimensional grid that holds, holds sand in between. And then you put sand and loam on top of it. My grid is, is more two-dimensional, it's just flat. That I was, was putting stuff on. This, this is a good product. I've, I've used this before. But in this case, it seemed almost like overkill. This is, this is quite a bit more expensive than what I was proposing. But it is nevertheless a good product.
Yeah, actually, what I was hoping you could respond to was in the fourth line down of paragraph three. Well, actually, why don't I just read it? "The effectiveness of the proposed BMP is also in question for the purpose of providing sufficient infiltration to meet town standards. In communications with main DEP staff, the BMP proposed by the applicant GeoGrid is considered an excellent product to improve reduced impacts from compaction, i.e. to prevent rutting. It is not expected to improve, maintain, or maintain, or improve slash maintain infiltration."
Right, as, and as I mentioned earlier, if we, what's out there, the gravel is, is quite compacted now. That's why I wanted to rototill it. Because that rototilling will loosen that up and will allow the infiltration.
Thank you.
Just like in your garden.
Okay, do any playing board members have other questions to ask at this time? Oh. Okay. So at this point, if there are no more questions, I think it's time to close that section and get into deliberations. I think we're at that point. So let us, let us proceed to that part. And then, as we talked about before, this is probably going to be the meat of, meat and potatoes of our discussions tonight, I suspect. Okay, we're. So I guess at this point, I would turn to the board and ask a logistical question to see about the best way to proceed. Because what we know we have to do at the end at some point is to have a vote on each of the parts of the findings of fact, right? That's something that's typical business that we would have to do. Would the board feel comfortable going through the draft findings of fact, item by item? I would recommend that and then have substantive discussion at that point. I'm looking for people to say something. Pete?
Oh, yeah, I just don't do it the way we've been doing it in the past. And, but, you know, we're comfortable with it. So that's why I feel like.
Right, George?
I, I just want to get, get clear in my head what, what you're actually suggesting. Are you suggesting that we simply go through what's in the packet, the findings, and then go back and make decisions on findings of the law? Whether or not the review criteria have been met? And if not, whether conditions are necessary to make that happen? Is that what you're suggesting, a two-part process? Or are you suggesting, as Peter's mentioned, going through like we've gone in the past and wrapping it all up together?
I guess I'm, I'm open. One of the things that, that is present for us is the, the culmination of work that to have very, you know, basically very thorough summary for each of the review criteria findings. I didn't, I didn't know if we would go to like that and say, okay, A, waiver request, look at the draft findings, discuss that to see what would be available, what would have to be edited or something at that point.
My preference would be to go through the findings and make any corrections. I would like to hear what Samantha has for suggested corrections. I've found two myself. Other board members may have found others. And then go back and, and decide on whether or not the specific review criteria have been met or not.
I, I would agree with that. Go through the findings, get them straight. And then deal with the criteria.
Okay.
My, Peter, can I jump in? I mean, certainly, however you, you've done it in the past would probably work. Obviously, these are really detailed. And again, George gets a lot of credit. Samantha asked whether I'd written these, and I haven't been a participant. So of course, I didn't, I didn't write these, but it was a lot of work. I, I mean, it, it may seem to me, it may be a little more efficient. I'm trying to think of how this would play out, to go through each paragraph on those findings and try to compare it to your, your form findings and sort of make a decision as you go through. And I think, I, I think I hear what you were saying, which was edit all the findings. But we might not need to edit all the findings if, if you, if you go through and sort of block off item by item, whether the standard has been met or not met. And Peter laid this out in a way, and, and we'll try to keep you straight. The, the fillable form, which you have, the sort of form findings, was not very agreeable. And the paragraphs don't always match up by letter. But I've done my best. I'll, I'll try to keep you straight on that. But again, if you want to go through everything and try to sort of summarize it, clean it up, and then go backwards, you can do it that way. But I just thought if you, if you dealt with a vote as you were on the findings, it might make sense.
Okay. So, so I just want to make sure I'm doing this right because probably I'm going to be doing some typing as we're doing it. So I'm, I'm looking for ways to make that work for, for the. Or for the process too. So, um, so I would ask, so, so George, but by what you're saying. Would we go to the fill, the fillable form you're saying, and then? Talk about that, or talk about the. Letter where we have the, um, uh. The review criteria findings.
Well, uh, what Mike laid out is, is different than what I had suggested, and I'll defer to him and, and. What he suggested was basically what you had suggested, that we do this the way we've done it in the past, all in. You know, uh, review criteria by review criteria. It, it, it really, at end of the day, it probably doesn't matter much. Um, the, uh, I, I do, I just want to make sure that, uh, we discuss whatever suggested corrections there may be. Uh, whether they be mine, or Samantha's, or somebody else's, um.
Yeah, and actually, just to clarify real quick on that, because, uh, George asked me about drafting these. Um, and to be clear, I mean, this is for discussion. If other people have things to add or things that maybe should come out, because as we heard earlier, something was misstated. Uh, by all means, I think that's the opportunity for people to, to correct. Uh, because everybody hears better than, uh, than just one person.
Okay. Alright, so. Let us, uh. Let us give this a try, okay? Let's just try. We gotta try.
Peter, I would just forewarn you, this fillable form is a bear and a half. It, it doesn't have enough space. It, it's. It's kind of screwed up, really.
Yeah, I know, I.
Point on it.
And Peter, Peter, my, my thought on that, again, I'm sorry to keep jumping in, but, um, was that if. If I can take notes, because I think I'm going to end up now doing some drafting now that I'm involved. If I can take notes on, um, George's, my hard copy of George's notes. And then later, not tonight, not try to type now, later transfer it over to your form. So that then you can vote on it at the next meeting. I think that's, that's how we'll, uh, best be able to do it. Um, certainly if other people, George maybe is sort of the board scribe, wants to take notes on his own, uh, he might be able to help me as well. But that was, that was how I thought, um, because if we compare the findings down, if they're redundant, that, that wouldn't hurt my feelings at all.
Okay. Okay, right. So, so can we start at the beginning then, um, with, uh, with what I think is the first one? Uh, the waiver request, so. People, I'm on page. Sixty-six, I think, of eighty-four. That make sense?
Yeah, Peter, I'm going to do it to you again. I keep saying I'm not going to interrupt. On the project summary, I, I think it's good, uh, that would go on the first page of the fillable findings. Uh, but I guess I'm just going to ask Manny. Manny, was there something, um, in, in that summary that was off?
Yeah, um, so on the first page, project summary. Um, the first sentence says boat restoration shop, it should include boat repair and restoration. It's been pretty much discussed all along.
Okay.
Um, and the construction of some pro- proposal includes land clearing, gravel fill. There's, I, I'm confused by the language in that, because there actually is no new land clearing and gravel fill. And no new structures, so the, everything that's there is existing, except for the revegetation.
So, this is a, a good question for you, uh, and it really is the same question we asked you when you attended last time. I mean. I know you don't like the term after the fact permit application, but that's how I view it. I mean, we're. The applicants are asking for the bring this facility, this pro- uh, facility, and hence. Proposed facility into compliance with the ordinance, and that entails everything that's been constructed. Prior to this date, with the exception of, uh, what was covered by the. Shoreland zoning, uh, permit issued in two thousand and eight.
So, I, I, George, I just wanted to add, at the last time Mr. Hodgson was here, he did say this was not considered a, a permit after the fact. We did clarify that. However, um, I would say that the, the, uh, the additional. Um, gravel in the parking lot, um, was approved prior to, under the home base business by Gary. And, um, he said, you know, at that point, it wasn't shoreland zoning, right, wrong, or indifferent. That was, uh, verbally approved. We didn't need a permit, as long as we did not. Um, extend more than twenty percent of impervious. And then also, the town did issue a permit to reconstruct the culvert entering the parking lot. Um, so, you know, I, I, I would argue that. That, that there's nothing new, and I think that's consistent with the consent agreement that we signed.
Fortunately, we have none of those permits in, as part of the application.
Well, it wouldn't be part of this application, because it was done previous, and there are separate applications. This is a new application, so they're existing.
So.
But is that correct, Mike?
Is, do you, do you want. Commercial development review ordinance approval for everything that's there today? I mean, this gets back to the public hearing. What is being applied for?
And, you know, my, my take on that is, again, it, in terms of the summary, it really doesn't matter what's being, what's being applied for. Are the uses that are being applied for. Um, there's nothing new being built, as I understand. Um, I think, you know, to, to Jeff Allen's points earlier, it's some, some of the pre-existing and, and, uh, you know, pre-construction conditions are considered. But in terms of what the project summary is, uh, I don't, I don't necessarily think that that's relevant, as long as it meets. The standards of what's required today, um, you know, under the ordinance. That's how, that's how I'd look at it. The summary, the summary is simply what, what they're asking for, uh, in their, in their, uh, con- uh, commercial use permit.
We're not asking for any new gravel in construction or land clearing with this permit, is my point.
Maybe if I could just suggest that. If one reads this, one might get the impression you're asking permission to build two storage structures, for instance. If you just added the word existing. Um, to, to, to the structures and the parking, the, the, uh, the structures. To make it clear that they're already there, maybe that would just make it more accurate.
Agreed.
Yeah, that, that's a good suggestion.
Yep, very good. Okay. So, so Mike, that was on.
Yep.
Project summary.
Yep, and thank you, thank you, Roger. I think I can take out, uh, a few words and, and clarify it. So, basically, the proposal would include existing. Uh, existing land and existing structures, et cetera. If that's good for the board, I think we could probably move on from there.
Okay.
And, and not to jump in, it seems like the, uh, maybe you can go through quickly, uh, what the, uh. What the submittals consist of, but it looks like they're probably accurate.
Right, so on the form, I, I just want to make sure I say this out loud. So. On, on that fillable form, we just went through B, A, project summary type. We have a agreed upon description. Uh, B was a waiver request submitted. Do we have an answer for that? So that should be yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Great. Um. Onto two. Application review process, that, so the date that the application was accepted as complete, uh, this goes back to. Uh, was it? End of February?
Yeah, it was February eighteenth meeting.
And Mike, tell me if I'm going too slowly or too quickly, either way, okay?
Good, alright, thanks.
Next is, was a site visit conducted? Yes or no? And then the di- date of the site visit. And so. Uh, the answer is yes. Um, a site visit was conducted by the town manager and the CEO at the time. I'm not positive of the date.
So, March ten.
It was also noted in the previous meetings that a number of planning board members visited Red Oak Lodge Road. Outside of the planning board site visit, for the record.
Okay, thank you. So after the site visit attendees, I don't think there's anybody outside of Anthony and Gary, right? So that list is short, a list of two. Um, next is the board meeting dates. We've had several.
So I can give you my list anyway. Uh, so January twenty-first. February, um. Eighteenth. March fourth, March eighteenth, and then today, April first. And that's all based on the minutes.
Thanks. Uh, next is, says the date the board rendered a final decision. I don't know that we haven't yet.
Can't fill that one in yet.
Next is three, so this is where we, I think, hopefully we'll line up with some of the work that's been done, and, and thank you, George, for. We're pulling so many things together to try to summarize as best we can. So, it mi- it might be wise to, I don't know how you want to do this, um. Talking about, uh, application materials, site plan, supporting documentation that was submitted. And then the first one. Said that the applicant has requested in writing that the board waived the following ordinance application requirements and review standards. So, going back to the paragraph that we have for that. Okay. Pardon me. So what we have, does everybody have the package in front of them where it says on page sixty-six, three A, and then there's, there's. Text there. I don't want to read it just to read it, right? But let me just ask, of that which is submitted, and it includes a date. Um, that, that. We said that the board approved the waiver at February eighteenth meeting. It, are we in agreement about that language that we talked about? A waiver from section eleven C one B of Article Six Development Standards. Regarding vegetative screening between a non-residential use and a public road. I'm looking for planning board members to. Tell me if we, if we're good with that.
I'm all set with it.
All set with it.
You are, and Craig, I heard you say you're all set.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. Pete, you good with, with that language?
Um. Yes.
And George?
Yes.
So, if it's okay, should we continue, or would you? Yeah? Mike, is that your recommendation, we continue, um, and go through all the, all the things?
Yeah, because that looks to me like it was already approved. You agree to the language. We can, I can copy and paste it. Um, uh, and I think you're on to the next, next page of the fillable findings.
Hey, let me take a peek.
So Peter, this is where it gets challenging, meshing the form with the, uh, findings. Uh, and the reason is, there's an error in the form. Uh, soil erosion isn't labeled as its own separate paragraph. It should, should have been labeled paragraph three B. And it's not, and so three B on, you'll notice, um, on the assumption that the form's going to be corrected. Rather than perpetuating the error, um, that, uh, the findings start with soil erosion at three B.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's the other way to look at that. If you look at the fillable form, um, it's, it doesn't have a letter in front of it, so we're, we're going to mesh that with. What is B in George's memo.
Gotcha.
And that's where we'll, we'll continue to remind you as we go through which letter corresponds to what. Um, but as you look at that, you'll see the finding, um, in the fillable findings says either the board finds a project will or will not. And then it refers to a couple, um, sections of the article. Um, and I think the next thing to do is then look at, um. George's three B to see if that complies with what you all agree, uh, the evidence shows.
Right. So, from the text that, that was submitted, um, here for, for this, with the. Soil erosion and land capacity to hold water. We currently do not have, um, from the applicant. A name and certification number, a DEP certification number, or someone certified to do work.
Mr., Mr. Chair, at the appropriate time, I, I've got to comment on that, if I could.
Okay, um.
And, and again, I don't know exactly how you're going to orchestrate this, but when you talk about conditions. That could certainly be a condition of this approval. That the applicant does submit the, the name of a, of, of the certified excavation contractor responsible for the earthwork.
Um, thank you.
Before going ahead.
Yep, thank you very much. Uh, Pete, go ahead.
And, and I think we've done that before, right, in other applications? You know, the condition. Another application?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. So.
I actually had conversation with Rick Damrin of, uh, Dave Hollowell Construction. Who is DEP certified, and he said that it would be fine to use his name as an installer. He's done a lot of work for us over the years.
Okay, thank you, Sean.
Yeah, man.
Peter, we're gonna, um. Be deciding on a conclusion, uh. With respect to, you know, that this will not cause unreasonable soil erosion. Um, I would suggest a, a, a condition that, uh, just simply ask for the name and the certification number. Of the main Department of Environmental Protection certified contractor to supervise soil erosion. Controls, uh, to be provided to the code enforcement officer no less than ten business days prior to the start of construction.
Okay.
And the construction being the fifty-five hundred square feet of, um. Of parking slash stormwater slash phosphorus control.
Area. Or. Uh, he, he didn't know his number off the top of his head when I talked to him about it, but. It can certainly be provided.
Thanks. So are we in agreement with that, that text? Now it sounds like there's a. George, is what you said, is that, is that to be included in that text? So when we do vote on the findings of fact, that that would be. Part of that text, is that what you're saying?
No, it, it, if you recall, the form calls for those, uh, conditions to be added to the end of. To go along with the standard conditions of approval.
Yep.
That are already listed.
Okay. Yep. So, are we in agreement then with what we, what we've talked about, that this summary for B is. Is capturing what we've talked about fully. That's really the essence of that. Are there any edits to this that we need to do? Not seeing any. Um, let's move on. Next is. C freshwater wetlands.
Which is now actually B, but yep.
Yeah, thank you.
I'll be, I'll be a broken record like that, but I'll just try to keep you straight.
Okay, it, it, so I'll just subtract one or something when I go through this.
Yeah.
So, C would really be. So C would really be, right, freshwater wetlands based on the applicant submission, the US of the required US fish and wildlife national wetlands inventory mapping testimony and public record, no wetlands were documented on the proposed project site. Board members, are we in agreement that that was the case?
Yes.
Yes.
Great. Thank you.
Peter? Especially on that one, I don't know, and I could have been wrong, but are you going to vote on these as you go through?
Well, I guess I would want to make sure I ask the board members, because that's, that was part of the discussion we had earlier.
Yeah, and that's what I was trying to clarify.
Yeah.
So I thought we were.
So before we go any further, is that what we want to do? Because if so, I want to make sure we do official roll calls.
Yeah.
Mike, we, we do need to vote on each individual one, don't we? And record that vote?
Yeah.
That's why, yeah.
All right, so we do have to vote then. So we haven't yet voted on B, right, about the we, we talked about it, but we, we, we didn't vote about the adverse impact on the freshwater wetlands. Right? We have not yet voted on that.
No, nor did you vote on unreasonable soil erosion.
Okay, let's go back to that one.
I think we had it, yeah.
Yeah. So for the soil erosion one, the way that's written is the board finds that the project will not or will cause unreasonable soil erosion or a reduction in the land's capacity to hold water so that an unsound or unhealthy condition exists. Then it references Article 6, Sections 3 and 13. Based on application submissions, the project's design plan dated, and then we'll fill that in. Soil erosion can plan, control plan dated, fill that in. So let us vote on that one. So if the board finds that the project will not cause unreasonable soil erosion. Pete?
Will not.
Will not. George?
Will not, only if the condition is included.
Craig?
I'm not.
Rich?
Well, not.
And I vote that it would, will not. So that'd be
So.
Unopposed.
George, just to clarify, you mean the condition on the contractor?
Yes. So what did we just approve? I mean, did we approve it without a condition?
I, I thought we had the condition in there.
Well, that's not how the motion was made. That's why I'm asking.
And technically, it probably wasn't a clear motion. It would make sense to me to, to make a motion and then vote as, as a group. And I think you've effectively done that unless somebody wants to object. I think George, it was understood with your condition. I was going to say as I do the findings, I've made a note that I'm going to note that condition even if we put it in somewhere else later in the, in the findings. Does that make sense? I think it makes sense to, to refer to it in those findings right there that with that condition, it's approved. And maybe the board could take a quick vote to sort of clarify that it's, that criteria is met.
With, okay. All right. So let us, I would entertain a motion on that, and please, someone?
I would make a motion to find that this will not cause unreasonable soil condition with a condition as mentioned earlier.
Okay.
I'll second.
And seconded. So let's, let's vote on that part. So Pete?
I agree.
George?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
And I agree. So five in favor and unopposed. So with the condition, that one passed. Okay. So following that logic, then I guess if then look for a motion on the next one, which is having it on freshwater wetlands. So I would entertain them. If we follow that same pattern, we would say have a motion, vote on that, which is be in the form. So in the motion.
I'll make a motion that project will not have an adverse impact on freshwater wetlands.
Second.
And seconded. Any more discussion? All those in favor? So again, roll call. So Pete?
Yeah, yes.
That it will not. Okay, George?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
And I would say I'm in favor too that it will not. Then we're down to next one, which has to do with the board finds that the have an adverse impact on Lake Pond or stream. So did we go over that language yet?
No, I think now you're looking at the, the findings which are under small d.
Thank you.
Which go on for several paragraphs. So you might want to take a look at those.
And there is an error in that.
And the error, George, that we're talking about, was that the, the phosphorus export standard?
No, it's the second, second, second line up from the bottom of the page where it says two inches of topsoil is proposed. It's actually four inches of topsoil is proposed.
Okay. So so with, with the correction being made of four inches of topsoil on top of the material that we're talking about, done in the manner that was described by Mr. Allen in the, in the application. Um, and what?
May I interject in here? This is Jeff Allen.
Yeah, very briefly, Jeff.
Yeah, they actually, we're re-vegetating more than the 1,200 square feet in a bear soil in the back. We're now proposing 4,300 square feet or 4,360.
Thank you.
That was your discussion earlier, earlier tonight. Sorry, Jeff, that was sort of the new email?
Yes.
Yeah. What was that number, 4,368?
4,360, I believe is the number. Thank you.
So thank you, Jeff. So they're proposing, as discussed earlier, an increase in re-vegetation, which would have an in a control that, if you will, of lessening the amount of export of phosphorus, right? That was part of the reason for doing it, right? It's mitigating control. I, I guess I would turn to the board too, based on what we've seen about this particular product that's being proposed. Is, is the comfort level that what is being proposed as would be sufficient?
Yes.
Pete, you're thinking so?
Yep.
Were, were there concerns at all? We talked a little bit about rutting and the amount of traffic going over, and if it gets squishy and all that kind of thing, and I guess I'm just wondering out loud about longevity and, and what would be done over time. I, I don't know.
I think, yeah, I think we kind of discussed that in the, you know, mud season is the only time it's going to be really of any concern. And one time it's hot and sometimes it's dry. So mud season, you know, you really don't want to be moving, moving around too much. So that's where the running is going to happen. So, you know, it's
Well, or when it's raining.
Well, you know, it's, it's, you're going to have to have a real good storm. But I don't think, you know, if I'm going to put myself in the shoes of being, being in that business, I wouldn't do it when it's raining out hard and during mud season. I don't want to be moving boats around. You're going to screw up the lawn. Basically, right? So it doesn't make any sense to do that. So I think it's just prudent operations.
My thought is that the mud season may be the same time as the time fishermen want to get their boats.
You know, the fishing love, you know, the number of fishing boats around here is really, really small. I've got to go along with Peter that early spring, we just, we don't move anything, you know? They get parked in the fall. They sit there until hopefully this year, mid-April, but normally first of May.
Many of our customers are, are, are not, they're seasonal residents. You know, they're, they're after school, out. Spring, middle of June, end of June. And the, the location that we're talking about is it's, it's not back and forth. We're talking about setting a boat there and then moving it out once. It's not, it's not like dragons cross back and forth, back and forth, back and forth. It's really minimal.
Thank you.
From the grass area to the gravel treatment area.
So looking to the board too, is what's being proposed, not only in terms of the product is about, but the how it would be used, the traffic over it, all of the submitted materials. Are we satisfied with what this will do in terms of helping minimize stormwater runoff and phosphorus export?
I am.
Craig, you are?
Yeah.
Anybody else have any opinions at this time, planning board members? George?
I'm not 100% confident, simply because we have credible written testimony indicating that DEP has some questions about that this will function as intended, but I'm willing to give the applicant the opportunity to prove, prove that it does work. And I have a series of conditions that address that it, once we get to that point. But at this point, I'm not convinced it will work.
I, I personally have my doubts.
Again, simply because DEP's weighed in and, and that's credible in my mind.
Same. Okay. And then the other part of this one has to do with boat washing operations that we talked about earlier. And I think the applicant had talked about anything that would come off the boat. I think that would be, see this, this is, I think, where we wanted to edit this text. Is that correct? I think there was a suggestion about editing this.
Well, there is a typo probably done by the, I would say made by the computer itself, but in the third line following should be changed to flowing.
Oh, ditches, oh, flowing to great pond or onto neighboring properties. Thank you.
George, where are you? I, I have your draft documents, but not the form. I think it copied on the form for some reason.
The, the form isn't packet, just so you know, it's, it's before the findings, if you scroll back, but.
Oh, I guess what I got was an email, but are we, are we looking at the text that we recommended that you're?
We're looking at that text. That's correct.
And we're on what number?
It would be D on, on that.
Impact on Lake Johnson.
Yeah. It's on page three of 10 on the actual document.
Thank you.
In the second.
I'll try to pay attention and follow along.
It's okay. It's hard. There's a lot of stuff going on.
I was trying to flip back to the fillable form.
Yep. So we have definitely, you know, one small typo in there, but, but the substance of what we have there, DEP comments indicate that they are most concerned that no boat repairs or restoration work be conducted on the reinforced turf so that detergent containing washware not transport oil grease or other pollutants into the ground. Then they talk about boat restoration repairs are proposed to be conducted in the shop. That's, that's what we said before, thereby avoiding spills of oils and hazardous materials directly into the soil and possibly along with the groundwater surface to water drainage. So, hi, Rich, do you have a question?
Oh, no, I just moved my arm.
Oh, okay. All right. So at this point for D, which on the form is C, are we ready for a motion on this one? Or is there anything more to discuss on this one?
Procedural question for you, Peter. How do you want to? How do you want to handle suggestions for conditions of approval? In the motion, or do you want to have a general discussion first? Hear, hear them and, and have a general discussion first?
I, I like that personally. My, myself, yeah. So to hear them and have a general discussion. So what, 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 what might you have in mind?
Well, as you know, there's several review criteria that deal with surface water quality impacts on great pond or surface water. This is the first of them. That, then there's also findings we need to make about potential impacts on groundwater quality. I have sort of a package of, of conditions that I think are necessary to make a positive finding. In part to accomplish a couple of things to make up for some of the well, the fact that we're kind of stitching together this application like we're stitching together a coil because it's all these little bits and pieces that have been submitted over time. So for increased clarity of expectations, both for the benefit of the applicant as well as for the code enforcement officer when he tries to do a compliance inspection, as well as to make up for some what I consider deficiencies in the application. So I can go through them if you'd like, and then we can discuss.
Please, let's do that.
Okay, so, and so the reason, like I said, some of this is for clarity. And so I'm just reiterating what we're stitching together here. So the first would be no boat repairs, restoration, paint scraping or painting is to occur on the 5,500 square foot reinforced turf boat and trailer storage, boat washing and stormwater management slash phosphorus treatment area shown on site plan. And that's, that was a request of DEP. If I could finish, please. Second would be prior, and this is a follow-up obviously to the question I asked Jeff Allen earlier, prior to the development or sale of any portion of the lots identified as part of this application, the applicant shall submit to the planning board for their review and approval revised phosphorus export calculations reflecting the effect of these changes and an amendment to the application stormwater management and phosphorus export plan if necessary to meet ordinance stormwater and phosphorus standards. That's number two. Number three would be the proposed 5,500 Number three would be the proposed fifty-five-hundred square foot reinforced turf stormwater management and phosphorus treatment system shall be completed by October first, two thousand twenty-one. The, uh, upon completion of construction and establishment of a good catch grass and inspection to ensure the system has been properly constructed shall be conducted by a main registered professional engineer and a written report of the inspection's findings provided to the town of Belgrade Code Enforcement Officer. In the event of finding improper construction, the report is to include recommendations as to the need for remedial measures that may be required to ensure proper operation. Boats and boat trailers may not be stored in this area until such time as a good catch of grass or turf is established. Third, uh, fourth, uh, revegetation with grass and trees of the, and I believe it's forty-three hundred sixty-eight square feet area bare soil sh- shown in the proposal site plan shall be completed by October first, two thousand twenty-one. I'm not sure whether that actually is true, uh, correct, uh, in the sense that all area, that entire area, the twelve-hundred square feet is, whether the rest of the square footage is now shown on the site plan. I, I'm not positive of that since I haven't seen that last middle. Uh, and, and lastly, starting June first, two thousand twenty-two, a written copy of the annual inspector report called for in the reinforced turf maintenance plan submitted as part of this application shall be provided to the town code enforcement officer annually by June first, including any required maintenance or repairs required to ensure the integrity and proper operation of the stormwater management and phosphorus treatment system. So as I said before, I'm not convinced the system's going to work, but with, if we have adequate inspections by a professional, we'll know that and remedial measures can be made.
So can you repeat, repeat that last one?
Sure. Uh, starting June first, two thousand twenty-two, so, you know, a little lo- little less than a year later, after construction, a written copy of the annual inspection report called for in the reinforced turf's maintenance plan, you may recall that was part of the submissions, submitted as part of this application shall be provided to the town code enforcement officer annually by June first. So June first, two thousand twenty-three, June first, two thousand twenty-four, et cetera. Including any required maintenance or repairs required to ensure the integrity and proper operation of the stormwater management and phosphorus treatment system.
I think that.
Go ahead, Rich.
Oh, okay. My thinking is that those are all reasonable conditions. Kind of adds a lot of conditions to the project, but I don't think any of them are unreasonable.
And it, it, it would help if we have any doubts about the, um, workings or the efficiency, uh, of the system in question, it would help answer that at that time. Pete?
Yeah, George, what was the first, uh, condition?
First one, uh, so this emanates from the, uh, exchange, email exchange that Jeff Allen had with DEP staff at their stormwater staff about what or what should not be done on top of the fifty-five-hundred square feet of reinforced forest turf to ensure that it continues to operate correctly and that the detergent and the biocides that are sometimes in those deter- detergents don't leach contaminants to groundwater and then to surface water. So the, to read it, sorry Pete for the large pre- prelude. No boat repairs, restoration, paint scraping or painting is to occur on the fifty-five-hundred square foot reinforced turf boat and trailer storage, boat washing and stormwater management slash phosphorus treatment area shown on the site plan.
Okay, and then my, okay, the boat washing, where, where is the boat washing normally done? Do we know?
Well, the proposal is to do it on top of the, uh, on, on top of that reinforced turf area. Uh, so that it, we don't, don't have wastewater from that operation uh, reaching surface water or going into the, uh, without some treatment. And so, uh, there was agreement with DEP that it would be done there, but with, basically with this condition.
Okay, all right, so, so the boat washing will be done there on, on fifty-five-hundred, DEP saying the boat washing? You just said the boat washing will be done on fifty-five-hundred square feet of previous area?
No, their concern was that if, if, if also conducted on that same area was, uh, either painting or scraping of boats or, um, uh, any kind of repairs or anything like that could, that, that could generate oil, grease or other contaminants, that the detergent would leach the, uh, those contaminants, including oil or grease. And this is not an uncommon occurrence. Uh, because, I mean, after all detergent is a surfactant, just like what they use in oil spill response. Um, and, um, the, uh, it will carry it into the groundwater and then eventually to surface water.
Okay, so, so where, where, then where would the, this particular process happen?
On, on top of the re- the fifty-five-hundred square foot reinforced turf.
You're saying that it won't. So what the condition is saying, you can't do it.
No, the condition says you can do the, uh, it does, it's silent. It, it allows the, uh, boat washing to occur there. It just says you can't do the, uh, paint scraping and repairs and restoration work there. Because, uh, that would be the source of any contaminants.
Right, right, I understand it. Okay, but I, I, that's why I asked, you know, kind of repeated it. I thought I heard couldn't do any boat washing there.
No, no, not at all.
What, what, it's so that's, so they can do boat, well, can you read it again? I'm sorry.
Yeah, and, and again, this is silent on boat washing aspect. The boat washing is just the background information. So the boat washing, this would, in essence, approve the boat washing on the, on that area. So the condition would be no boat repairs, restoration, paint scraping or painting is to occur on the fifty-five-hundred square foot reinforced turf, boat and trailer storage, comma, boat washing, comma, and stormwater management phosphorus treatment area shown on the site plan.
So why, why, so why don't you, why don't you eliminate the boat? Why do you bring up boat washing in that language? I guess I don't follow.
They want the boat washing there.
Huh?
They want the boat washing up in that fifty-five-hundred square feet. That's where, that's where they want it. They don't want to do the mechanical work, the boat scraping and the other stuff in that area.
Right, so I don't see why this condition has to mention boat washing. I just.
It doesn't.
It, it doesn't.
All right, okay, I, I, that's, are you guys, okay. I will go on with way you're thinking. All right, I just, it is a little, I'm still confused in that, but all right, I'll, I'll go on.
It, it may make sense as we go along. Samantha, I know you want to say something. Please, um, be brief, please.
I, I, I'm just saying that some of these conditions related to boat work and they're all part of, that's part of um, regulations around boat stocks, um, you know, what are front rules? We follow those things. They don't necessarily have to be a condition. If they're not followed, that's an ordinance violation. I don't think that, it, you know, I'm questioning whether, for example, the Southern Lake Alliance has a condition of annual reporting on the enforcement, it's the same thing that's proposed here by, uh, Jeff Allen. Well, respected and needed in the, in the, in the field. You know, I, I feel like there are extra, um, conditions being put on this application based on, on things. That, that are being put on other, other businesses in the area. Which I have no, no problem doing the things that are required, being required to do because they're all part of, um, coding and normal adherence to ordinance. So I don't necessarily think they need to be brought out into the application process because if we violate them, we're violating them.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Do you have something to say?
If I ask this question, is, am I the only one or every time Samantha speaks, I'm having difficulty hearing her. It sounds very muffled. And maybe if I'm the only one having a problem.
I'm having the same problem.
Samantha, maybe you could, maybe you could try without your headset or I don't know, but I, you, you're kind of hard to understand.
Yeah.
Thank you.
But I think I got a gist of what Samantha wa- was asking about and, and perhaps if you want to weigh in after I, I try, take a crack at it. If I understood what you were saying correctly, um, conditions um, to a permit help allow both the town and the applicants understand what's expected under the ordinance. That's it. And we have every right to do that in any case. That's what we do. So Mike.
I, I, I.
Hang on, please, Samantha. Hang on, please. Michael, did I capture that okay?
Oh, I'm sorry, actually, me, sorry.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, you, you do have, uh, you do have the obligation, I mean, the, uh, the opportunity to put conditions on. For example, I think some of George, George's conditions are to make sure that the planting, for example, the reinforced area that is proposed is maintained. And so to approve it without requiring that it be maintained, um, I mean, that's, that, that's a reasonable condition. I think what Samantha was saying.
I don't have any issues with that. I just, I, I just feel like this long laundry list.
Yeah.
Is, is a little bit detailed and a little bit excessive.
Yeah, I think to, to what Samantha was saying too, to paraphrase, I think what I was hearing was you were saying that certain things are best practices, so those are conditions you're going to follow anyways. And, and I understand that, but I think the condition again was specifically not to do certain things in certain areas, which I think is a little more limited than even best practices. It was just, don't do that in this area.
So, so one of the things that I questioned about George's, um, findings of fact, which I'm sorry, Mike, I thought that was yours initially, was the, the statement about boat work all inside. There is an occasion where something might be outside, but there's a practice which was stated in the previous meeting where anytime you're doing anything that might occur outside, that can't happen inside, is that you lay out parts as a standard practice where that happens, we relayed that information in the previous meeting.
Hey, thank you.
And, and so I don't think necessarily all the information that's been communicated to the E P is completely accurate.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, so we've had, um, a discussion about the, um, text we have that summarized what, what's going on. We've had a discussion about the conditions that, that, uh, or we have had a presentation of the conditions that we've been talking about, which would identify specific areas where things could occur, as well as the submission of, um, uh, basically how well the thing is functioning. As in short, um, I don't mean to gloss over any detail, so George, thank you for the work on those. Are there, planning board members, are there items we need to discuss relative to this topic and/or the conditions that have been presented so far?
I don't have anything new other than I think that they're reasonable.
Okay, Craig, did you have a question?
Well, I think it's, it's allowing laundry list, um. For the most of them, most, most of them are fine. I don't have anything to say.
Okay, thank you, Craig. Pete, go ahead.
I, I just do want to say that going forward, if we're going to have, uh, any more, um, marine is, uh, getting approved, et cetera, whatever, uh, we need to treat everyone the same as far as number of conditions going forward. So it's, I just want to point that out.
Yep. Good point. We want to treat everybody the same. We'll, we'll be learning as we go along. That's the other thing. We're hopefully learning about it and, yeah, improve. George?
I very much, uh, agree with Pete's comment about treating everybody the same. And I think these conditions are necessary for us to do that so that we're treat everybody, the best way to treat everybody the same is to ensure everybody's in, is meeting the, uh, review criteria and the ordinance. And that's the way we keep a level playing field.
Okay. So with those things in mind, um, we're ready to, uh, to make a, a motion on this, this area of the fillable form, which should be C. It's right on the form, Mike?
Yes.
D in the, D in the document, C on the form.
That's right.
So I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion that, uh, we accept this, um.
So.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
We can help you out, I think, a little bit because if you go to the fillable form, it's framed as will or will not do something. So, so the motion would be, you know, you would move that this will not have adverse impact on impacts to lakes, ponds and streams, blah, 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 along with the conditions that were submitted. Example.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's a good, I, you took the words right out of my mouth.
Wow. Fellow men named Peter might say something like that, so that's. Okay. All right, so we have a motion and it's been seconded, uh, so we, as with the conditions. Is there any more discussion about this? Okay, I would, uh, I will vote, roll call, so as we have done in the past, so thank you, everybody. So, so Pete?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
And I'm in favor, so that's five in favor, none opposed to C on the fillable form, which is on the document. Thank you, everybody, for your patience as we go through this. This is complicated. It's involved. I really appreciate it. And we're making progress, so this is good. I'm now on E, adequate stormwater on the dock, which should be D on the fillable form. And this is getting back to the stormwater management, uh, which was discussed. So we, we know we have some edits, right, in this one? Including, let's see, like six lines down. The revegetation with grass and trees of rather than twelve-hundred square feet, it should be, Jeff, help me out, is it forty-three sixty?
That's correct.
Okay.
The error in the number of inches of topsoil is also in this, um, paragraph, and that's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven lines down.
So where it reads, um, two inches of topsoil is proposed, we want to say.
Four.
And it, we reference the, um, main DEP phosphorus export standard of point zero seven eight pounds per acre per year for Great Pond. And, uh, as George, as you noted, in our ordinance, it's not up to date. Right, so I'm glad that we have the DEP referenced number, which the applicants have proposed to use, which is more, a more conservative number, right? So, um, I just want to make sure I asked, that, that's the right number, eight point zero seven eight? Yeah, okay, thanks.
Yeah, I, I believe so, and Jeff is nodding his head in affirmative.
Yep, thank you. Okay. So we've made some edits based on some recent info. So we've made some edits based on some recent information. Thank you very much, Jeff, for that information. Are there topics that we need to discuss relative to this to make an informed decision about going forward on adequate stormwater management? Anybody have anything?
Well, just the note and to tie this all together, as I mentioned earlier, the conditions that we just approved previously allow us to make a positive finding on this review criteria as well.
Thank you. Is this what quilting is like?
I don't know. I've never quilted, but that's what it seems like an appropriate analogy to me.
Yeah, it's good. Yeah, okay. Okay. So maybe this is straightforward. Are we ready to vote on this one? There's on.
I did still been a quill. That was cool.
This is E on the document, D on the form. Are we ready to vote on this one? So if so, entertain a motion on on this topic about whether it will or will not, whoever wants to frame it adequately meet the stormwater management part.
I would make a motion that it will meet the standard with the conditions already cited previously cited.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. I should have a motion and it's been seconded. Any more discussion on this particular item? Hearing none, roll call vote. So Pete?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
And I am in favor. So that's five in favor, none opposed on this one. Moving on to the next item, which is item F on the document, should be E, correct, on the fillable form. This has to do with adequate sewage disposal. I know the applicants have talked to us about having the port of John for employees. No new subsurface wastewater disposal is part of the proposal. And it is stated that the an existing permitted subsurface wastewater disposal serves the business office and personal home of the applicant. That was made clear, I believe, several times. So any any edits to this? Any anything? This one could be easy.
I can make ocean.
Go for it, Rich.
Ocean that adequate sewage disposal will be is is present, will be, it'll meet it.
Okay, thank you. So have a motion? Need a second?
Second.
Thank you. Motion seconded. Any more discussion on the whether or not it will meet the adequate sewer disposal topic? Hearing none, we'll vote, we'll call Pete?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Maybe. Craig, can you hear me okay?
Oh, yes.
And Rich?
Yes.
And I vote in favor, yes, that it will. And none opposed. Okay, thanks, everybody. We're making progress. Next is G, which should be F on the form?
Oh, actually, it's it's blank on the form. So so it's it's between E and F on the form.
Okay, we'll we'll go with whatever that is then.
It's E sub one, between E sub one, maybe.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
I'm glad I'm keeping you straight.
So thank you. So this has to do with flood plains. Based on the application submittals, including the FEMA floodplain map, the proposed project is not located in the flood in a floodplain and as such conforms to the town of Belgrade Floodplain Management Ordinance. Any more discussion on this? If no, I would entertain a motion on this topic.
Make a motion that it is not in the floodplain.
Okay.
Second it.
Seconded. Motion and seconded. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Pete?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
And I'm in favor of that. So and none opposed. Okay, next is on the document H, air and water pollution. Then I want to go back to this other one.
That's F.
That's F, okay. And so, yeah. Air and water pollution. Yep. Surface water pollution prevention measures proposed by the applicant are summarized in paragraph three dot D of this document, which we have discussed. We talked about groundwater pollution prevention measures, including the oil and hazardous material and waste handling procedures. There is mention of the portage on for employees. And we talk about how the applicant has agreed with main DEP to not conduct boat restoration or repairs on the reinforced turf area shown on the site plan, which reduces the risk of oil or other pollutants reaching the groundwater. We we have had, I think, a pretty good discussion about this, but I just want to make sure. Are we all clear with what we've talked about on this particular topic?
Yes.
Okay. If so, I would entertain a motion on this topic, which on the fillable form is F about air and water pollution, it either will or will not have an adverse impact.
I make a motion. This application will not increase water pollution.
Air air or water pollution, that's what the form says. I'm just trying to be, is that is that fair, Peter?
It is fair to me, Pete Sergeant.
Yes, yes, we'll say I'll revise and say will not increase air or water pollution.
Got it.
I'll second it.
And seconded. And George, I saw your hands. So what discussion item?
I would just add that with respect not to air, but to the water pollution, the conditions that have been previously approved should be applied to this finding as well.
So that would be that would require an amendment to the motion, I think, just to clarify.
Right.
All right. So what am I supposed to do? Make amendment? I think make an amendment. I could just say regarding period and regarding water pollution, the additional most emotions that were discussed prior will be part of this motion, right?
Let me let me back up and try to phrase it.
Thank you.
And again, assuming that you'll you'll withdraw your motion and amend it. I think I think what George is suggesting is that the the board finds that the project will not result in air or water pollution providing the five previously approved conditions are met. I don't know if that helped or not.
I think that's exactly it. So so Pete, having heard what Michael said, I think it's appropriate to withdraw your original one and then then state.
I I will withdraw my motion.
And do you want to make a motion to what Michael just said?
Someone else make the motion.
Okay.
Maybe George wants to make the motion. It was it was his condition.
Sure. So the the motion would be will not result in air or water pollution conditioned based on the five previously approved conditions.
So we have a motion. Need a second?
Second.
And seconded. Craig, thank you very much. Pete and Craig, both at the same time. Any more discussion? Okay, hearing none, let's vote on this. So Pete?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
I would I'm in favor too. So five in favor, none opposed. Um, next is item I document.
D on the form.
Thank you. So so this says sufficient drinking water. And the application materials submitted indicate that no bathroom or cooking facilities are part of the proposal and the employee toilet facilities consist of a portage on. No new drinking water well is proposed and existing residential well serves the needs of the facilities proposed office. Anything more on this one? If not, I would, George, go ahead.
I was just wondering if I I'm trying to keep in mind Mr. Kate's earlier suggestion, whether rather than since the office is not going to be constructed, that it maybe should propose should be changed that existing.
Oh. Yes, so Samantha and Sean, does that make sense, what we're talking about there, rather to go to?
Yeah, I I think just a blanket throughout.
Good point, George. Thank you.
All right. Thanks. Thanks very much. Good eye. So I don't want to rush you, Michael.
I got that one.
Okay, thank you.
One word, I found it.
Excellent. So I would entertain a motion on this one if we are ready for it.
Make a motion. There is no impact on the existing drinking water system.
Okay. And a second?
I'll do it.
Thank you, Rich. Any more discussion? Hearing none, we'll move on to the call vote. So for sufficient drinking water. Pete?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
I'm in favor. So that's five in favor, none opposed. Next is impact on groundwater quality and quantity, which is J on the document. Is it?
H.
H on the form.
Yes.
Thank you. And thank you to Jeff Allen and the applicants for submitting the hazardous waste transportation records that you did. I think that helped show that or demonstrate that. There is no floor drain in the boat repair shop floor.
No, there is not, just in case.
Yep. Thank you, Sean. That helps. The proposed site is not on a significant sand and gravel as met by MGS. That's also very important. And thank you to the communication with EP engineer Dave McCaskill. Thank you for, I can't remember who did that, but thank you for doing that. It looks like the fire chief is is good with existing structure. It's noted here that there is a condition on the assessment of the fire chief that he had to say that the Marine is responsible to notify the fire department of any change of five gallons or more to a chemical storage for given for this permanent application. So as we read through this, there is no evidence presented that that this activity would have an adverse impact on the quantity of the groundwater used as drinking water supplies by the surrounding residents or the applicant.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question?
You may, Mr. Kate. Go right ahead.
Thank you. And this is something we discussed. Sean mentioned it has to do with the last sentence of the next to last paragraph that you just referred to. Says, however, the fire chief placed the condition on his assessment indicating that Brightside Marina is responsible to notify the fire department of any change of five gallons or more to the chemical storage given for this permanent application. And in the discussions with Sean this afternoon, and maybe he's got some other information, he was unaware of that and thought that the five might actually be a typo. But I don't know if Sean, if you found out anything else since then.
Yeah.
I don't think we were aware of that that amendment to it, but I was curious, does that mean the storage of chemicals? You know, obviously, if we're ordering key to oil, does that mean we have to notify the fire department every time we order a case of oil?
Go ahead, George.
Um, first off, I can just read from the letter that you received from Dan McKenzie, the fire chief, and submitted as part of the application and it just simply said would have already really been summarized. Brightside Marine is responsible to notify the fire department of any change of five gallons or more to the chemical storage given for this permit application. My interpretation of that is that since what he reviewed was the inventory of hazardous substances and hazardous waste specific in particular, the waste gasoline, which is a hazardous waste, the 55 gallons of that and the 55 gallons of waste oil. My guess is that's what he's most concerned about are the things that would pose a risk to his firefighters when responding. This is for anybody that's familiar with the community right to know law, which is a federal law, I sort of in line with that. So rather than chemical, maybe it should read hazardous materials and substances.
Yeah, I'm not sure what the language is, but that was something I flagged earlier in my notes, that, you know, it probably wouldn't do. You know, if we're ordering paint to paint the boat, we might order five gallons of paint. I'm pretty sure the fire department doesn't want to know that. I'm assuming that they're talking about the.
Samantha, you cut out.
I don't know why.
I think the perspective to take is go ahead. I'm sorry. The perspective to take is the fire department is going to be responding to a potential fire at this facility. They need to know what flammable and combustible materials are there. If there's they might respond differently and in terms of what fire foam they bring and things of that nature. So I think it's really the, I think it's, you know, certainly the waste oil, the waste gasoline, but any combustible, flammable material. but any combustible, flammable materials that you're storing indoors. So I, I think if you buy, you know, you bring in five gallons of, of a highly combustible solvent, I think they would want to know that in the context of firefighting.
It's not the way I read it. The way I read it is any change, so whatever they're using now. So if they were to add another fifty-five gallon drum or whatever for storage, any change or increase is what they're talking about. So the regular use, even if they bring in five gallons of the normal solvent, that's what they're using. So this is an increase. This is like bringing in fifty gallons.
Yeah.
So.
Craig, you're exactly right. I, I misspoke.
Uh, so I'm, can you guys hear me now? I don't know why my microphone's cutting out.
Yes.
All right. Okay, good. Um, I, my, I, I just, I think we should clarify that. It's not, you know, the, the normal flow of shop materials. Would be part of the natural inventory, but, but we wouldn't be saying that we can only have X number of gallons of paint, X number of, you know, i- i- it's sort of ebbs and flows. I, I think they're talking about storage of, you know, our, our waste products, as Craig said. So I just think that should be clarified.
It is.
Findings of fact.
Yep. Yep, I think so too. Thanks, Craig.
And, and I clarify, are we talking about five gallons or fifty-five gallons?
The letter said five gallons.
Okay. It, I try it just for a second. So it, is there a, is there a, is there some kind of a storage permit? That you already have?
I don't, I don't think there's a official permit. DP's been out, Jen Justerson's been out. They approved the, um, the waste oil and waste gasoline. We set it up according to their specifications. It's not a lot. Um, I think Jeff can probably speak to, uh, the amount of storage. So we are under a threshold of needing certain permits because we don't use enough of that. Um, uh, but my understanding is everything that we're doing is within compliance of the DEP and, uh.
Right. Is, is any question about that Samantha? Is, is whatever, whatever is you're permitted to store now? I think what this is saying.
I, I think we're under permissible amounts of, of.
Okay.
You know, we, we don't produce enough and we don't store enough to require a permit, is my understanding. But Jeff, maybe you can correct me.
No, that's correct. There are certain thresholds you have to meet for even a small storage, uh, container. But I think that's, um, we don't even approach that threshold and, and, uh, there, there are a lot of different reasons to, to, this is not included, simply because it's not all in one container. It's in a, you know, a variety of small containers that are not likely to all spill at once. Uh, so, um, they're, they're certainly without, under the thresholds.
Oh, if we were to change our waste oil or waste, you know, use gasoline, or were to expand, uh, you know, our storage of that sort of thing, we certainly would be able to notify. But, but I think there's clarity in the language needed.
Go ahead, George.
Um, can I roll out some language and see if that helps? Hopefully it doesn't make matters worse. See, um, I mean, I can't read word, you know, what's in the fire chief's letter, but, um, uh, the, uh, I think this um, maybe gets to the meat of the matter. The fire chief place a condition on this assessment indicating that Brightside is responsible and notify the fire department of any change of five gallons or more to, um, the hazardous um, materials or waste storage given for this permit application over that in the current inventory. Remembering that it was the inventory that you folks submitted that I think.
Right, but I think, I think we were asked to submit a current inventory. It could fluctuate depending on the time of the year. But I, but I would, I would suggest maybe we just simplify the language to say that we meet the criteria um, specified by the fire chief.
Yeah, I, I, I was, um, sorry to jump in, but I was going to suggest, um, and Roger is a good writer too. Maybe he's got, he's.
Yeah.
Issue, but I, I think not getting hung up on restating what the fire chief said. In simply trying to, um, i- if you need a condition, put a condition on, um, not to propose more conditions. Or, or simply say what you understand it to mean, um, and then the fire chief can deal with it.
Right.
Later on. Because if his lang- sorry, if his language isn't clear from his letter, it's gonna make your findings not clear. So I'd rather, rather not guess.
We can, we are certainly happy to do whatever the fire chief would like us to do. But, um, yeah, I, again, I don't think it's clear. I don't think we have to restate, restate it. We can, we can adhere to whatever guidelines they, they are requesting. I suspect that they are not requesting us to notify them every time we order a case of oil.
Right.
Right.
Right, exactly.
It's not, uh, that's not what he's asking.
Okay, um. Confusing, but are we in a better spot now on this one? I think, maybe? Little bit, okay. Um, what other things do we talk about relative to the topic of impact on groundwater quality and quantity? In order to have a positive findings of fact, I guess that's the way I'm looking at it. George?
Well, I, I just wanted to pick up on Mike's suggestion. I do think, um, to resolve this, we, we will need a condition to implement the fire chief's, uh, recommendation.
And, and just have it kind of stated that simply?
Uh, well, actually I have some other language that I, you know, I would suggest, and then we can whack at it.
Let's do it.
The, um, Belgrade Fire Chief, so this would be the proposed condition. The Belgrade Fire Chief shall be notified in writing of any increase of five gallons or more. And operative word being increased, uh, in the volume of hazardous substances or wastes, including waste gasoline and waste oil stored at the proposals facility, uh, location.
Okay.
Isn't that just saying what he just said? I mean, I don't, I don't feel the need for a condition.
Well, there's a bit, there's a, a technical difference between hazardous substances and waste versus chemicals. Chemicals is more inclusive. So by using hazardous substances waste, you, you eliminate if you buy five gallons of varnish or something like that versus increasing, you know, uh, going to be increasing employees consequently, presumably increasing the amount of waste. Uh, if the amount of waste gasoline goes up, or if the amount of waste oil goes up, or the main, if there's a larger volume of some kind of solvent, you know, greater than five gallons, so that's highly flammable. Again, we got to look at this from the perspective of a firefighter.
Couldn't we just, couldn't we just restate that to say that the condition is that we will follow the, um, fire chief's recommendations regarding storage of hazardous waste or oil? Uh, it seems like that would be the simplest way to do it.
Well.
Yeah.
I, I mean.
I would defer to them.
I, I was just go- going by what the words that he used, uh, it, which is chemical and that I think is what you're objecting to.
I'm, I'm not objecting to anything particular. I, I think the language is vague and I think I, I'm not sure that the intent, um, their intent is being, that we can interpretate the intent. Uh, that we can interpret the intent of what that, that language means. Uh, Mike.
Well, I'm.
I defer to Mike.
I'm gonna ask Peter. Peter, do you mind if I make a suggestion?
No, please do. I know Roger had his hand up too, so go, go ahead.
I offered to let Roger do it, but I'll, I'll go first. I mean, my thought, looking at the form, a- at the findings, uh, because I think a condition's hard because it's vague, because to me, and I'm not looking at the letter, it's hard to understand what the fire chief was saying. So if we put a period after the word assessment, however, the fire chief placed a condition on this assessment, period. The applicant shall communicate with and follow, uh, the guidance of the, um, fire chief with respect to storage of chemicals. And then leave it to the fire chief basically to, to enforce it. Does that make some sense, Roger?
To me, to me, that's a great suggestion.
I agree.
I, I like that too. It's a former HazWhopper guy, so I'm good.
Okay. I, I will, since I, I suggested it, I will try to incorporate that and make sure we get it right when we review it.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Um, uh, so is anything else about impacts to groundwater quality or quantity that we need to talk about relative to what has been submitted? Okay, seeing none, um, are we ready for, um, a motion on this one then? So I, I, I'd hear one. So Pete raises his hand. Go for it.
Uh, the application has no impact on groundwater and qualities.
So it will not have adverse impact on quality and quantity? Did you say that?
Okay, we can say that. No adverse impact on groundwater and quality.
Right. George?
Um, I, I would prefer to have the condition that Mike had, um, proposed be part of that motion.
All right, and that, that, they, that, the, uh, that condition is, is going to be worked on. So we can't really come up with that. We really can't make a pass on this particular.
I, I'm putting it, I'm putting it in the findings. Uh, uh, the other option is, uh, that, the, I think what George is saying is the condition could be that the applicant shall communicate chemical storage requirements with the fire chief and follow the guidance of the fire chief. Is that about what I said?
Yeah.
Yes.
That, that, I agree. Whatever, what it works. Just.
So would that then be a, a, a condition to?
Yeah, to my, a condition, whatever you said. Add on, come on. This is dragging on, it's like.
All right, so we have a motion with a condition. And Michael, thank you for your help on crafting that together for this one. So is everybody, do we have a second on that?
I'll second.
Thank you, George. Any more discussion? Therefore, all those in favor, Pete?
Uh, great.
George?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
I'm in favor. So five in favor, none opposed. Next, uh, will be disposal of solid waste. Um, that, maybe I on the form, Michael?
A, okay, K in the paragraph, I on the form, yeah.
Yep. So, um, we're talking about solid waste generated by the facility is within the capacity of the town. Transfer station is disposed in conformance with the transfer regulations. They're talking about cubic yards annually of plastic boat covers and other solid waste disposed in a dumpster located out of view of public road. Says it. On occasion, unused oil-based paint is disposed at the transfer station. Say oil-based paint in small volumes is classified, classified by DEP as universal hazardous waste. This is something before, I believe. And its disposal in small volumes business is allowed by the town's transfer station rules.
Man, that's not.
Rich, say again?
I said, I don't think that's true. Uh, as Sean said earlier, uh, he doesn't take that stuff to the transfer station and the transfer station can't really take small quantities of hazardous waste regardless of, uh, from a business anyway. Um, yeah, the other, I would think that we could have something like, the, the, uh, town deals with solid weight, I mean, that the applicant, we agree that he deals with solid waste in a, uh, satisfactory manner. However, any kind of hazardous waste, uh, must be uh, handled and disposed of, or particularly disposed of according to, uh, the main state and federal regulations. So that we're, we're not telling him exactly what he's gonna do, but he, other than make sure he disposing of it properly.
George?
I'm unmuted. So this, um, was difficult to write up, uh, for a couple of reasons. One is I was under the impression that Rick, Rich just stated, um, the, uh, but when I went to look at the transfer station rules posted on the town website, it specifically allows the disposal of oil-based paint. Um, the, uh, I, I would also say that I went back to the, um, uh, trans- not the transcript, but the recording of, um, I think was the February eighteenth meeting. And in a moment of, uh, frank, uh, being very frank, uh, Sean testified that he admitted on occasion, he does dispose of oil-based paint. Uh, whether it was liquid or, or solidified, uh, he didn't say, but, um, at the transfer station. And that's the only reason why this is even in there. Um, the, my own personal experience is that they've only, uh, accepted mine when, uh, it was solidified with kitty litter and otherwise told me to bring it to the, uh, uh, you know, the household hazardous waste, uh, 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 pickup at the Augusta Public Works Department or, you know, Winslow Public Works or wherever it's being held. Uh, so it's, there's a little bit of conflicting information here, but on, on the town website, it, the rules of the transfer station specifically and very clearly say that they'll take it, even though you bring it there, they won't.
Uh, let me also say that according to Mike Hudson, that would, that's not legal. And maybe the town needs to address its, uh, transfer station and guidelines or whatever. But, uh, according to Mike, you can't take oil-based paint and dispose of it, the town transfer station.
Can I, can I add to George? In, in part of that conversation that was in the, there was in the recording was, we, we also talked about the, the amounts of that were very minimal because we use, you know, again, some of that oil-based paint is three hundred dollars a quart.
Yeah.
We don't waste it. So, so the context of that comment is very important. That, that for the most part, we are not disposing of half quarts. We're not disposing of, it's mostly empty, dried up cans.
Yeah. No, I.
And, and, and for the most part, for the, the, the work that's done here, the, um, and I'm sure JT who's on here can, can comment on that. He says conversations with DEP. Most, for the most part, the, um, the, the paints that are used are standard across the restoration process. So it's a, it's a certain type of paint. Um, so, so they're used and saved and, and reused. We don't just, you know, go through a boat and throw the balance away. It just doesn't happen. It's too expensive.
Yeah, no, I, I agree. Um, and hence why I. Yeah, no, I, I agree, um, and hence why I said in small volumes on a very rare occasion.
Yeah. And again, the small volumes were, you know, there, there's some paint cans that go, that, that go, but they're generally empty and dried up.
So, so the text that we have in front of us is what was submitted and what we talked about. That's what we're talking about, correct? So if there's some discrepancy with, with what the town has for rules, as compared for the transfer station, as compared to federal and state rules, that's, I think, probably a separate issue, right? And, um, I'm sensing maybe a condition for an approval of this particular topic is probably right for the, this one. Um, um, what, what else do we need to talk about with the disposal of solid waste relative to what has been submitted for this application? Okay, I'm not hearing or seeing anything about this one. So, are we ready?
I have a small interjection, if applicable.
Very brief, JT. This is the board's business.
Yeah, of course, very brief, yeah. Just based on that topic of a disposable paint cans. As Mandy stated, all that stuff gets used to the fullest extent. If there's anything left in it, it's like a bare skin. And, uh, just this past week, I spoke with, uh, our main representative for the paint company we use, and, uh, we're converting a boat over to electric power, and the woman said she wants a paint with no biocides whatsoever. Nothing that could contaminate the lake in any form. And I said, oh, well, you know, there's only one product I can think of that we could do that with. Talked to the representative, he said, uh, this year, coming up with, you know, green energy, which we all want, that's coming up in this year, and we're gonna have access to that, non-bioside paint on top of converting boats to electric power. So, I mean, that's the direction we're headed. If that says anything to the, uh, oil-based paint disposal of cans and things like that, just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Thanks, JT. I understand the direction you want to go with that, which is.
Yeah, yeah, I just want to make that really clear, because it's important to me, as well as to all of you, I'm sure.
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, planning board, are, are we ready for a motion on this particular, um, topic relative to what has been stated and submitted so far? Okay, I, I entertain a motion if someone's ready. No one's ready.
Well, I'm hesitating only because Rich has stepped away from his computer, and I suspect he was loo- looking to make a condition, uh, um, well, maybe we wait for him, but, uh, I, I was just. Yeah. No, never mind.
We, we can wait for, for, uh, Rich to come back. A short break, yeah.
Short break.
There's Rich, okay. Rich?
Yeah.
The, the disposal.
And I can't put it on mute.
Someone's not on mute, please. Um, Taran, uh, disposal of solid waste, have not had a motion, but I think we're ready for one. Um, and one of the last things we talked about is that, that what's in front of us is what was submitted and what we talked about in the meetings, that there may be a difference between that and what the town's rules might be in conflict with state and federal rules. So maybe there'll be a condition to a motion. I don't know.
Yeah, what about something of, uh, the project will deal with hazardous, uh, with, with solid waste, uh, um, in a effective manner. Um, however, uh, any disposal of hazardous waste shall comply with, uh, uh, state regulations.
So, so would that be the overall motion?
Uh, I guess so. Uh, yeah.
Okay, so I, I think we need to build it up a little bit more, because you were saying that you, there's a motion that this will not have an adverse impact. That was phrased.
I mean, it, will we jump in, Peter?
Please.
The, the for, the form can be, the form is pretty helpful, um, because it says the board finds a proposed activity will dispose of all solid waste in conformance with the local regulations, uh, and that the type and quantity of waste proposed to be sent to the transfer facility will not exceed its capacity. Um, and, uh, the, the one caveat I heard, um, is the only concern I heard was, um, possible oil-based paint. So what might be added to the end of that is, um, so long as, um, oil-based paint is, um, disposed of according to town guidelines, town transfer station guidelines.
Uh, is that, uh, is, does that make sense if the town guidelines aren't proper?
Yes, so let me jump in there. So, so that's, that's where I'm coming in, or that's where I'm feeling there's a, a little bit of a problem, not with the applicants, but with what the town's regulation may not be in sync with, or the transfer station be in sync with state and federal things. Right? Because if the town says, yeah, we can accept small amounts of stuff, but we know that some of that stuff should not be handled that way, then that's not, it's not a good way to go.
In, in my only, my only thought is, I, I don't know that you can control what the, what the transfer station does, um, as the planning board. I mean, if they're, uh, I, I think, um, I think if they're disposing of waste according to the guidelines that they're given, um, uh, if, if the transfer station wants to stop accepting it, then it's gotta go somewhere else.
Hmm.
I, I just a little bit concerned that you're trying to put sort of requirements on what the transfer station can, can accept.
Hmm. Good point.
At the same time, I would look at is we're not telling him what to do at the transfer station. We're telling the applicant that he needs to dispose of it according to federal and state rules.
Which we have no problem doing. I, 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 I just think this, this is a, a issue outside of the application. And then the, you know, if the town has guidelines, they either have to, you know, if you could a caveat that we follow the guidelines, which we obviously will, um, then it's the town's responsibility and the transfer station's responsibility to follow state guidelines. Not us to follow, the applicant to follow state guidelines that the transfer station is not following. Does that make sense? Does that make sense, Mike?
It's, it's, it's a tough call, and the other thing is it's, uh, um, it, it, from what I've heard, it does seem to be sort of, uh, small, small quantities, if at all.
Yeah.
I'm sure.
Very small.
I, I mean, I, I, it, it doesn't matter to us. It's such small amounts. It, 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 it doesn't really matter, but, uh, but, uh, but I think it's, it complicates issues if you're, if the town has transfer station guidelines, but some people, for some people, it's not, some businesses, it's not applicable, and some businesses, it is. You know, I, I, that, that's your call. We can do whatever you want us to do, but I, it just, um.
Yep, thank you. So planning board members, where are we with this one?
I think we're just taking a motion on the way it's written and move on with it.
Yeah, I can live with that. George?
Um, question for you, Mike. I, I mean, is it really all that unreasonable, particularly since this is not their intention, and, and they've already said they, you know, don't plan to do, do so, to require, um, basically to dispose of hazardous wastes, hazardous wastes, not a solid waste? I mean, I think that's what Rich is getting at. I mean, it doesn't, DEP rules and, and EPA rules kind of trump town ordinance?
But, here's the thing, if, if they are violating EPA rules or some other rules, they're gonna have issues beyond, um, I think the, the permit here. Uh, and the other thing I'm looking at is, I mean, it does talk about the fact that, uh, I think that, uh, some, well, maybe it's not in this paragraph, um, where, where other solvents, et cetera, are handled by another company. Um, so I think we are really talking about sort of a, a fairly minor, minor issue.
Yes, and it does say solid waste as well.
It is, is true. It says solid waste, and the things that we're concerned about are liquid waste.
That's, yeah.
And hazardous materials, which is taken care of in other areas. So I would just like to make a motion that solid waste performance and regulations will not, will not exceed the capacity of the transfer station.
Thank you, Craig. Have a second?
Second.
Okay, so there's been a motion in a second that it will not exceed the capacity of the transfer station. Um, any more discussion? All those in favor, Pete?
Yes.
George?
Yes, uh, I, I, I'll just say, though, that I'll be in touch with Anthony about those transfer station rules.
You beat me to it, George.
What's that?
Did you beat me to it?
Craig?
Yes.
Rich?
Uh, yes, I think in the same way as George.
Same. Uh, and I'm in favor, so five in favor, none opposed. Mike, did you have a comment?
I, I was just gonna, wanted to clarify. I think this was, um, Craig's intent was that to follow the language in I on the form. That seems to be what we've been doing. Um, and I was just gonna point out, as I read through it more carefully, it says conformance with local regulations uh, in the type and quantity of waste. And so, uh, you're really only talking about what the local, um, transfer station allows. So, um, I, I think, I think you're fine, uh, with the vote, uh, and, and those of you who want to talk to the transfer station, I guess you can. But I think as, as the motion reads, I think you're, uh, you're fine.
Okay, thank you. That was disposal of solid waste. Um, now, next is L on the document, which is probably J. J on the form has to do with detrimental effects on adjacent land uses and properties.
And again, on the form, affected by waste, noise, glare, lighting, fumes, smoke, dust, odors.
And the way the, the, uh, findings of fact reads, what it reads here is, the board finds that the project will or will not have a significant detrimental effect on adjacent land uses um, and properties affected by waste, noise, glare, lighting, fumes, smoke, dust, odors, or their effects from the project. Significant detrimental effect on land uses. Okay. All right, based on the application's, um, submittal information, what basically the text, have we captured everything that we need to in there, first of all? Anybody have any, uh, comments on this one?
All right, so we, we have a, uh, a, uh, trees, or, or we have for, uh, to shield, you know, any, the view or whatever, I mean, what's going on?
That's, that's a next, that's a subsequent item. I think this is noise, pollution, dust, et cetera.
It's not visual.
Okay. Hey, Pete, I think if we're talking about screening, it's, it's another one. This, this one has to do with detrimental effects on adjacent land uses and properties based on the proposed activity.
And we, uh, we gotta make this decision based on that list of things afterward, right? Not adding new ones to it.
Rich, would, I, I'm not sure if I'm clear on what you're asking.
Uh, I think the, the statement said not have, uh, whatever, uh, based on, it didn't have a list of four or five items at toward the end of that statement, uh, that we're looking at, uh.
Oh, on the form itself? Yes.
We have to stick to it, and we have to stick to that criteria when making this decision.
Right, waste, noise, glare, lighting, fumes, smoke, dust, odors, or their effects from the project. So those are the things.
My opinion is that, uh, there's, none of those items are an issue here, a significant issue.
George?
Um, the, uh, I just wanted to make clear that, uh, the findings, the way they're drafted, separates out noise from the other items, uh, that could be a potential nuisance or, or have a detrimental effect on the property. And in the case of most of them, other than, in the case of everything other than noise, we don't have any testimony or any other evidence that those are problematic. We, uh, we have, uh, conflicting evidence with regard to noise, whether or not uh, that has an impact on neighbors, including written testimony from a butter that had taken, um, decibel readings on her, on, uh, a smartphone. Um, and, um, and that, a, a, and the only information we have from the applicant is opinion. We don't have a noise survey or any effective data regarding noise, I should say.
Yep, so relative to noise, and, and Mr. Case would be right with you, but relative is, um, the, and a butter who used a smartphone app, looked like, uh, talked about a certain decibel over three hours. But if I'm not mistaken, according to our ordinance, it was not an exceedance of, of that, was it? Of the, of, of what we would have in the ordinance.
Uh, there was a maximum reading of sixty-one decibels. So a, at, at one point in time, there was an exceedance.
Right, sixty-one decibels over, which is
Which is barely.
One decibel over, over.
Right, and it wasn't clear, a hundred percent clear as to what app that was and how accurate it was. There's a number of different methodologies to use that decimals, I think Roger Katz can speak to that.
Yeah, thank you, Samantha. Uh, Roger, did you have something?
Thanks, just, just briefly, thank you. I think as Mr. Seal pointed out, the she, first of all, she was using a phone app. And, you know, God knows how, how accurate that is. It's like, you know, getting a phone app that measures re, re, purports to measure radar speed, and you stand on the side of the road and says it's, cars going seventy-one, well, maybe, maybe yes, maybe no. We don't know anything about this app, as he points out, but as, as you just pointed out, the, the ordinance allows, that the ordinance has an upper level, level of sixty decibels. All of her readings were under sixty, I think it was fifty-one. But the ordinance goes on to say that that sixty decibels can be exceeded by ten decibels, but no more than fifteen minutes per day. For no more than fifteen minutes per day. And she talks about it being sixty-one on an occasion. Not for it being sixty-one over any extended period of time, so. Respectfully to 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 her, using her phone app. Um, nothing she's presented shows that the, that in any way the noise levels are in excess of what the ordinance permits.
Thank you, Roger. So for the planning board, oh, go ahead, George.
So a couple of points I would like to make, uh, well, first off is the burden of proof is on the applicant that they meet. The noise standard. And I'm not sure whether that's been done. Uh, secondly, um, the uh. The testimony that we have also indicates that the noise is sufficient to interfere with. Um, the uh, abutters working at home. So there's an apparent impact. Um, on that property and that property owner. Um, Mr. Case is of course correct about the ordinance. So there can be short-term exceedances of the sixty decibels. Um, the only other thing I would add, just for everybody's information is, uh, just based on personal information from. My own has Whopper uh, training, um. Uh, that uh, some of these apps are very accurate and some are not. Uh, NIOSH, the National Institute of Occupational Safety and Health, which is part of the National Institute of Health. Uh, actually developed one for testing in occupational safety settings. And that is extremely uh, accurate. So it's a question, uh, we, um, the way I view this is on one hand, we have data of. Uncertain reliability on one hand, and on the other hand, we have zip. Just opinion.
Mr. Chair? Perhaps I could, I could suggest that that this be a condition that the applicant will operate its business. In such a manner as not to exceed the noise levels as set out in the ordinance.
Thank you for the suggestion.
And that's fine. I would also just like to add that there, there have been a number of other construction projects in the housing. Immediately around us, I'm not a hundred percent clear. We we have found that we have been, uh, that some of the noise and traffic congestion that we've been, that have been contributed to Brightside. Have not actually been for Brightside. So there, there has been a number of construction projects, a number of um. Restoration projects of housing where there's saws going and there's um, excavation going on. Roto-toing, gardening, so.
Understood.
Uh, it's not clear.
Yeah, understood, thank you.
Hey, Wood?
ET?
Yes, I'll be brief. Um, and even some of our noisiest tools, just like I was saying with our conversion over to electric motors. Uh, some of the tools, we're also looking forward to transferring to less noisy. Forms of getting work done. Some of our little air sanders are half as quiet as our electric sanders. Things of that nature, because I don't like wearing earplugs either, or anything like that. So.
So I understand what you're saying about the. The care that you have relative to that particular topic. I I do understand what you're saying. Um, wanted to make sure, George, you had something?
Yeah, I I I like um, Mr. Kate's suggestion, uh, as long as the board members understand that places the burden on the town. Uh, in terms of the code enforcement officer having to respond to complaints. And and the town being responsible for for taking the uh, noise measurements. Rather than the way the ordinance provides for us to require, if we so choose, uh, to have the applicant conduct a. Uh, sound noise survey, and I I acknowledge Samantha's comment, you know, you have to with take out background noise. For it to be an accurate measurement, but um. But I, again, uh, bottom line, not, I'm okay with Mr. Kate's suggestion, uh, just as long as we understand the town's taking on this burden.
Right, it's e- especially um. Meaningful at this time, right? Cause we're, we're looking for a new CEO. I was gonna say, should that be a challenge? That means that we would be uh, unable to to conduct that, that bit of business, so. Michael?
I I guess I'll say, I mean, that that would apply anyways. Um, because it's here in the ordinance, um, and I guess when it comes to looking at the evidence. Um, and I'm looking at the actual ordinance section, uh, section seven A. Um, it 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 says it has to be continuous, regular, or frequent. Um, which is a whole other different standard, which I don't know that the evidence was that it was continuous, uh, for one thing. Um, but the other part, uh, I think goes to partly what what Roger had said. Um, y- you can exceed sixty decibels for up, for up to fifteen minutes. And uh, as far as I can tell, uh, there was a time that it went to sixty-one. I don't think that's. Really evidence that the expected noise is going to continuously, um, you know, exceed the levels of the ordinance. Um, and and noise ordinances are very difficult to enforce just by their very nature.
Thank you, Mike, that's real helpful.
Thank you.
Peter, if you're ready for a motion, I'm prepared to make one.
I I would, I would be, I'm ready.
Um, I I I would simply just make the motion that um. Uh, the project will not have a significant detrimental effect and no, no condition associated with it.
I'll second it.
Thanks. Any more discussion? Thank you also for talking about the idea that. It's difficult to enforce these, um, and the burden on the town at times might be very challenging. So. All those in favor, roll call, Pete?
Uh, yes.
George?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
I'm in favor, so five in favor, none opposed. Next is um, M on the document, which should be.
K.
A. Highway or public road congestion slash unsafe conditions. The application site plan show two points of vehicle access to the Hewland Road. In a line of sight of two hundred feet. The application estimates peak hourly traffic at three to four vehicles. Uh, there was public hearing testimony expressing concern for the safety of children. Uh, playing and residential users on Red Oak Lodge, sorry, Red Oak Lodge Road. Related to the transport of boat trailers to a proposed second boat trailer storage area off this road. Um, then it's noted that Red Oak Lodge Road is a narrow private camp road. Okay. Ha- have we um. With this text that we have here. Have we captured things correctly? Or is there anything else? To discuss on this one, planning board? Go ahead.
My thinking is, I think it's, it's captured. Uh, and as far as being. A traffic hazard or anything like that. Those road, that road is so, both the roads are so small and narrow that. There's a speed limit is, is gonna, I don't know what the speed limit technically is, but. No one's gonna go more than fifteen miles an hour or something on those roads, so. Um, I don't think. I wouldn't worry about vehicle accidents or and stuff like that, uh, just based on. The. The limits that are imposed naturally by the size of the road.
Okay. Rich? Anybody else have any comments about? The road congestion issue or unsafe conditions uh, relative to what this project proposes to do?
I'm just curious, how many children uh, live in that road?
I do not know.
I'm aware of one.
We, we don't have any information in the record, one way or the other.
Well, yeah, right, because it was mentioned that, you know. Children and and adults and I, I.
Yeah. Yeah, we just had that statement on the record, that's all.
Okay.
I I'm aware of one child on that road, that's a Richard child, I'm sure Stacy Richard can say. I know my daughter s- worked as a um, sitter for them numerous times and the requisition when she took the. The, their son for a walk was that they. She be, that he be in a stroller. So I'm not sure what that concern was.
I'm going on recollection here, so it could be off, but was there also some mention of some of the summer residents about. Visiting children, like, you know, not residents, but visiting children. I don't recall exactly, it seemed like there was something.
Uh, I don't recall that.
Okay, not enough to, I guess, make any difference and um, relative to written testimony for this topic. It's an important topic, but relative to that part. Anything else on this one? George?
Well, I was just gonna make a motion.
I'd, I'd entertain a motion if you are ready.
Um, board finds the project uh, will not cause unreasonable highway. Or public road congestion. Or unsafe conditions. By the way, public road is operative.
I second it.
Motion and seconded, any more discussion?
Can I just ask a question for clarification, Peter?
Yes.
Um, just to jump in, what would it make sense for me to add in these findings? Um, uh, Rich's comment that based on physical limitations of the road, uh, vehicles travel at very low speeds. Would that be acceptable to the board? Not necessary? It's up to you.
Well, the question I would have, Mike, is I I can't recall us or anybody else bringing that up in the past. Um, except to the extent that Jeff Allen and his, in the application indicated the speed limit was uh, twenty miles per hour.
Okay, in my opinion, Mike, is, I I would say to not put that in. Um, because I can't suppose how other people will behave.
Yep.
Thank you, though. We have a motion and second, uh, are we ready to vote then? Yes. Alright, so Pete?
Uh, yes.
George?
Yes.
Uh, Craig?
Yes.
And Rich?
Yes.
And I'm in favor, so five in favor, none opposed. Next. Is. On the document, which is probably. L?
N, which is L, yep.
Yeah. So the effect on scenic beauty aesthetics, historic slash archaeological sites and public access.
Again, just on the uh, uh, reading on the actual language of the the findings themselves, um, it uh. Talks about whether it'll have any adverse effect on the scenic or natural beauty of the area aesthetics. Um, or any public rights for physical or visual access to the shoreline or water body, which. May or may not be relevant here.
This, this was one of the areas where I had a question about the language that was written. If if it's a time to bring that up.
Let's do that. What's your question?
So there, there was discussion in this about the um, visual buffer screening for the parking area that was defined. Behind. The home. A- and discussions about the um. The visibility from the residential properties on School Street, and I assume the intention was that that there was some. In situation that there should be screening there, but that property sits, the the residential properties sit above. But in doing a review of other boat storage facilities, including Carter's Marine Storage and Belgrade Boat Shop Storage. It doesn't appear that there is any screening required for parking of boats in those. Areas, so I'm not sure if that, if that was the intent of this language or not, but it it doesn't appear that other like businesses. Have screening between residential properties. I'm happy to forward pictures if you would like from public roads.
Thank you, Samantha.
Peter?
Go ahead, George.
Uh, just the. There was no uh, uh, intent one way or the other, I was just reflecting on what was on the public record, but. Um, I I I should just point out, make sure we're all clear. Um, to, uh, the two uh, examples that Samantha gave, neither of those required approval under the uh, this ordinance. Cause they're grandfathered, and the one boat storage area that we did review when I first came on the board. Uh, is, and I can't recall the name of it, but it's on Route twenty-seven and a, and a thirty-five foot visual uh. Screen, uh, vegetative screen uh, was uh, maintained there of natural woodland.
So I know one of them would not have been, one of the ones I referenced would not have been uh. Grandfathered. Is it started after? We did, but.
Oh.
Yeah, I I I'm just saying that was, that was reviewed with the CEO, so.
Uh, yeah, uh, Car- Carter's would be grandfathered, the other probably would not. Samantha's correct about that.
So, again, you know, just i- i- there, there is, the language is fairly gray between what is parking. And what is storage, and it it does seem that the, the, the language around storage talks about mechanical equipment. And automobiles. The other point on this was, there was a discussion about, I think the language said that the, the. They're actually not abandoned cars. There, there are two cars that are um, awaiting repair, restoration, I think by JT. And um, we said that those, I I think JT said that those could be removed, um, but if we're gonna do screening. They don't necessarily need to be removed.
Samantha, could I ask you a question?
Sure.
Do you know where the town road? Uh, stops and the private road begins on the uh, Oaks, uh, the ledge road there?
I believe it's right where the pavement ends.
Okay. Where you've cut trees right almost up to the road and they're laying on the ground, that is not part of the town road at that.
That's correct.
Okay. I was.
We, you know, we went through Gary, we went through the state, the the forestry permit was all taken care of, it's posted. On the, on that property.
Uh, the reason I asked is that the town has a tree ordinance on public roads, uh, but that's not a public road at.
No, we were very careful about that. Or at least, uh, you know, we. Or or at least, you know, we reviewed it with Gary and we reviewed it with the the state and the forester that did the did the tree um, harvesting seemed, you know, to to be diligent about following the protocols and and we actually made sure that we did a survey to make sure we weren't cutting outside of the limitation, so we we had a surveyor do that.
I'll be right back. Carry on.
I was gonna say, if we take a break, maybe we should, maybe we should just take a five minute break.
I would agree, that's a good idea.
Good idea.
I was gonna say, maybe we we probably shouldn't carry on without without the chair, so.
Yeah, you think?
Return in five minutes, I mean.
Works for me.
Nine twenty-five.
George, you there?
I was gonna go to the bathroom, actually.
You get your second shot, George?
And actually, I thought of mentioning it at the start, you know, like, maybe we should, you know, build in a five minute break or something. We got on a roll, so that was, it's okay.
You did, you did keep telling us we were making progress.
Yeah. Alright, we'll keep on going. Okay, so I think we're back in action, we have all the planning board members here and others are filtering back in. Alright. So we were on scenic beauty aesthetics, historic and archaeological sites and public access part, if I'm not mistaken. Cleared up or clarified anything that was Samantha brought up something, did we clarify that at all? Or were we any closer being clear there? No, maybe yes. Alright, well, let's keep moving.
What topic were we?
Yeah, I think we were on the um we had just approved the public road unsafe conditions one, we're on effect on scenic beauty aesthetics, historic archaeological sites and public access.
Yeah, that's what we are on.
Yeah.
Yeah, there, my only thought on that one was the uh, Red Oaks Lodge Road or whatever, uh, but I don't think there's anything that we can do to require a buffer on that area, but if I if I were any of the people who would have a concern, it seems like it'd be more of the people on the Red Oak Lodge Road than it is the School Street, but.
Sorry, I'm trying to catch up, I just, I didn't think we'd run out of five minutes, so.
Go ahead, George.
Um, I I would just note, and it's noted in the findings, that we had pretty extensive testimony from residents of Red Oak Lodge Road about um well, I, the way I summed it up here was that they view the facility as being unsightly because of all the outdoor material storage. Um, they put it in different words exactly, but um.
Right.
So just to reinforce what Rich said.
I got I got my thought, can I just talk about it? Yep, the uh, this applicant is located in a business business area.
It's the district.
Yeah, business, business district, right?
Village District on the comprehensive plan.
Yeah, and and I going back, so it's a bit, so how does comprehensive plan, again, I've brought this up before. Are they encouraging businesses to come into the area? The comprehensive plan?
Go ahead, George, because I I think the answer is yes, but.
Yeah, no, the answer, the answer is is yes, in the sense that it's a an intended growth area, both for residential and commercial development.
Oh, what, okay, um, so now, this, the two roads we're talking about. Historically, it was business mostly, going back to the fifties. And now it's changed to residential? So I guess, but my point is, but you know, it was always historically a business area. And so who's, so and so who has precedence, I guess, in 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 the neighborhood? The residential people or the the business people? I think it's the business people. And I think they need to work together. And if the residential people can always put up uh, trees, shrubs, uh barrier type, um, shielding type of vegetation, so they can do that type of thing. So that's what I kind of look at from that perspective.
Thank you, Pete, Michael, you have something?
Yeah, well, actually, can I just clarify, it is in the village district? Yes, okay, because I I was looking back at the actual ordinance uh, which is referenced um, in in the findings, in the dra- in the uh, form findings. And under eleven B, it talks about screening. Uh, and it says screening shall be required whenever a proposed non-residential use abuts a residential development or home and is not located within the village district. So I I think one of the issues there is if it's located within the village district, maybe to what Peter's saying is the presumption that the the screening um, isn't required in those areas for the very reason that Peter Peter just said.
Yes, go ahead, George.
Uh, Michael's exactly correct, but that's only one of the two applicable provisions in the ordinance, the second is the material storage one which um has also has a the provision that the board could require um, fencing or screening by virtue of the fact that outdoor, there's a lot of outdoor storage of of um whatever, you know, uh, cars, uh, lumber, or or in this case, boats and trailers. So there are two provisions that come into play and and the 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 provision that Michael mentioned is not applicable here because it is in the village district, but we could apply the second if we so chose. The uh, because it's under a different provision of the ordinance and 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 neither of these are impacted by the waiver that uh, we've granted, because that's a waiver from vegetative screening along the Hulan Road, the public road.
Oh, can I just respond a little bit, uh, historically? I think it was mentioned earlier during this full process, the application uh, that the applicant said that uh, that was a a boat restoration, boat type of thing. Uh, so if you know, I think there's some grandfathering to me in the in the fact that we we got a business, it's not new, it was, it used to be a Marina boat type of thing is on the stream, alright, the the Petro family who's still in the property. Then it was sold and eventually it turned into residential, and then the applicant came in and he decided to do do marine type of business, alright, so I think we need to take that take that in consideration, this isn't, you know, this was a business area back in the fifties, so so this is this, there's a lot of history here.
I think, Peter, we have to consider the uh you're correct, it may have been a business or whatever, but uh, when we're looking at this, I think we need to look at this as an expansion of a business, not just the businesses there.
Well, that's a good point, but I don't know how how how, you know, what was going on in that property there uh, before, back in the fifties, who knows, I don't know. It was, there were, you know, there was a lodge down there, down this road. And so back in the fifties, there are a lot of businesses around there.
It actually was a boat boat building shop on the on the stream with a um, trolley and a boathouse on the shoreland.
Yep.
Just, just for the information, the DePetro's confirmed that. There was a a boat building and restoration shop at this location across the street on the twenty-four Hill inside. There's still remnants of the trolley.
Yep.
Interesting.
Of historic historical significance, um, and we also, I think, should be mindful that there are residents down there as well. And our ordinance, uh I have material storage does allow for um like, as George pointed out, that uh right here, um is used for storage or collection of motor motor vehicles and other things that they list. Uh, must have sufficient setbacks and screenings such as stockade fence or dense evergreen hedge to provide a visual buffer sufficient to minimize their impact on abutting residential users and users of the public streets, so on the residential side, that's what I'm thinking of that part.
So I would just add to to that, that um, the the vehicles was our understanding from Gary and the town manager was that um, that was related more to a junkyard situation, that there are two vehicles unregistered or on uh, you know, on unregistered vehicles allowed, Gary Fuller did do a site survey, he did not, and for the record, did not find any violations. Um, that being said, it's not our intention to use that for ongoing storage. And um, if we were to use that for ongoing storage, we would be happy to have a caveat that we would put up some stockade fencing in front of this the the portion of the road where we would store boats. Right now, they're just our boats, but that, but we'd be happy to do that.
Thank you, Samantha, George.
Um, are you ready for a motion?
I am.
Um, I'll make a motion that um the board finds that the project, to the maximum extent possible, will not have an adverse effect on scenic and natural beauty aesthetics, et cetera, uh, with a condition. And uh, here's my proposed condition for people's consideration. All boats and trailers awaiting restoration, repairs, sale or rental, or to be used for tours currently stored on Belgrade Map. Twenty-six lots fifty-six, fifty-seven and fifty-eight shall be stored in areas designated on the application site plan behind and on the south side of the office and boat shop from Hulan Road. All other materials stored out of doors on these same lots and associated with this commercial use shall be stored away from the Hulan Road on the south side of the office and boat shop. Uh, all materials associated with this commercial use, including boats and trailers, shall be moved to the above locations by June first, two thousand twenty-one. All existing natural vegetation, including woodland, shall be maintained as a visual buffer between the material storage areas and nearby residences. Cutting of vegetation without within the existing buffer and setback areas is limited to the cutting of dead and dying trees without prior approval of the planning board.
So sorry, I have a question about that, George. So you're you're relating the boat storages, so our own personal boats are okay to put there?
Yeah, I I'm just.
Yeah, and cars.
What the commercial.
It's JT's cars.
What the what the commercial use entails, a- as we discussed at the public hearing.
Right.
That seems within the ordinance and fair.
Thank you, um, Samantha, for your for your question, because that helps clarify stuff. George, thanks for the motion with that condition. Um, we don't have a second yet, do I, can I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Craig. Uh, any more discussion on this? No, all those in favor, roll call vote Pete.
No.
Uh, George?
Yes.
Uh, Craig?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
I'm in favor, so that's four in favor, one opposed. Assets.
Hey, George, just for, as as Peter's moving on to the next, you're you're gonna be able to send me those conditions that you have typed up. Because because I can't write that fast.
Uh, yeah, certainly I can.
We'll get to that later, thank you.
And I just, I I just want to clarify, George, that the lots that you stated, I couldn't, I couldn't follow it that fast, are basically the commercial boat storage, trailers and su- such are.
Those are the lots on your.
To be, right, but to be um are to be basically in the lot, the parking area behind the house.
Correct.
Got it. You went through them very fast, I couldn't quite cut, keep.
Yeah, no, I know.
I don't know by heart.
Okay, I think we are on.
Oh.
Oh.
Which is, which is M.
Do we have to go to Z?
No, quite, not quite. Thank goodness, okay. So this is um, effect on significant wildlife habitat in critical natural areas, Mike, we on the same one?
Yes.
Okay, great.
You want to move things along, I'll motion, make a motion that it has no effect on uh uh, significant wild wildlife habit or historical sites or whatever the word was.
Thanks, Rich, um, I did want to bring up, the text in here does talk about see, the applicants' mittles do not include a mapping from IF and W uh, relative to the beginning with habitat program to to determine the presence or absence of a threatened or endangered species or other significant wildlife habitat, as we're in section six B. Um, habitat protection, article six, development standards generally in generally of the ordinance. So that's that's in our text here. The application states that there's no significant wildlife habitats or endangered threatened species habitat located on the proposed site.
If I might add, I did go through and and check those beginning with habitat maps. Again, I had checked them initially back when we filed the application and before I made the statement that there was no significant habitat. Um, I checked them again yesterday and there there still are no identified habitats back there. I could have included them with the application, but just did not, thought my statement would be adequate.
Thanks, Jeff. Um, so part of me, you know, was to say, well, how would we know unless yet information is provided? It's none. I'm asking this to any anybody.
There's nothing there. I mean, why would be there?
Thanks, Craig. George?
Um, yeah, I can confirm that Jeff Allen is correct, because I also checked um the beginning with habitat maps, but the fact of the matter is, the ordinance requires its submission and it hasn't been submitted, and I think a simple condition could rectify it. That, you know, um, I I don't think it'll have a net effect. That, you know, I, I don't think it'll have a net effect of any sort in terms of require, in official wildlife. You know, required mitigation plan or anything of that nature. But I think we're going to treat all applicants the same. We should treat all applicants the same.
I'd be happy to, that if, if that's necessary, I could get that in by early next week.
Thanks. I, I think it's fair to have that condition. So. Rich maybe had a motion, I'm not sure. He started to.
Yes, he did.
I, I did have a motion.
Okay, so, and then I kind of went on a turn because I had a question, so then we had some conversation, but Rich had a motion. Do we have a second? Okay, any more discussion on this? Because I'm sensing a condition will be, actually, how do we do that?
Uh, sorry, Peter, I was, I was going to suggest that maybe the motion would be withdrawn so that the condition could be added, just so it's clear.
Okay, I would throw the motion.
Okay, thanks. So Rich, you may have heard or maybe not, we were talking about as a condition to submit the part about. Habitat.
Yeah, yeah, I did hear that.
Okay, do you want to restate a motion with that condition then?
Make a motion that the project. Does not, will not have adverse effect on wildlife habitat. Provided that we get the information from the applicant confirming it. Uh, and there. Did they, we get any information on the other, other aspect of that that was habitat, oh, the historical resource? We, we need a condition on that too?
Uh, on this one, it's just the wildlife habitat and critical natural areas.
Oh, natural, oh, okay, I get you. Yeah. Both of those, as long as we get confirmation from the applicant. That, that's in fact true.
Okay. So, George?
I, I would just note that in the application, we do have written. Uh, comments from the natural areas program in conservation. Indicating that there's no known unique natural areas there. It's simply the wildlife habitat por- portion we're missing.
Okay, well, I amend it to drop the. Other than the habitat, whatever.
Okay, George, actually, George, sorry, what, what's the, the actual name of, of the information you're looking for?
That's called beginning with habitat mapping.
Okay.
All right, so we have a, a motion with, it sounds like a condition, right? Uh, that they would get the beginning with habitat mapping submitted.
I think that's well framed. Maybe you can get a, maybe you can get that as a motion.
So.
Rich, does that sound good?
It sounds good. I'm not sure I could put it together in a motion, but.
I, I think, I think it's clear now. I, I feel.
Okay, great. So we have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
And seconded, any more discussion? Hearing none, we'll move on. All those in favor?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
I'm in favor, five in favor, none opposed. Onto P in the document, which is like.
Oh.
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 Ooh. So this is, um, conforms with town ordinances. Okay. So with this one, with conforming with the town ordinances, as we read through this. The first paragraph halfway through section five land use standards, paragraph D, commercial use of the town of Belgrade. Minimum lot size ordinance requires a commercial use to have a minimum of 60,000 square feet in lot area. And at least 200 feet of road frontage on public and private roads. The applicant exceeds both, so had, has at least the minimum, right? That's what we're saying, so we're. Okay. Second paragraph. We're, we're. Talking about. The applicant does not at this time applied. For or attained a shoreline zone permit for commercial use to the boat repair shop and other portions of the proposal within the shoreline zone. When we went through looking at the completeness of the application, the board agreed with the applicant's request that they may obtain this permit at a later date. If their commercial development review ordinance app. In permit are approved, in this event, it was also agreed by the board and the applicant to address. The obtaining of this town permit by means of a condition of approval.
Peter?
Yes.
I just wanted to note a, a correction, actually, it was a correction that Mike pointed out.
Yes.
The. Where talks about the existing, the 2008 shoreline zoning permit, it's for boat painting and repairs.
Okay, so not just boat repairs, right?
Correct.
And there's no indication that. Other ordinances are. In play here, right, for. Okay. So, are we good with, with this summary? We have had one edit going on there. Is there anything else that we have not yet captured that we need to summarize or make correct? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion. Go ahead.
Um, so I would like to propose a motion. Turn the page. Finds project, oops. Hold on. Okay, the board finds the project. Conforms with all other applicable town of Belgrade ordinances, da 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 da, with a condition. And my proposed condition is that applicant shall submit to the planning board the required shoreline zoning permit application. No later, later than, and I'm leaving this blank, because I, I think we should have a discussion about. What that date should be with the applicant. The planning board's conditional approval under the commercial development review ordinance is not effective unless and until such time as the shoreline zoning permit is issued. Again, the, I think the, we should discuss the date with.
Yeah.
The applicant.
Although, if they can't do the commercial development without the shoreline zoning permit. Not sure we need to put a date on it, because. They would, they wouldn't sit back and not issue it or reply for it, because they want to get rolling.
That's a fair point.
I, I think in the initial meetings, it was agreed that the, the permit would be granting, granted. Rather than having us apply for a shoreline zoning permit first. The, the, this commercial permit would be granting contingent on subsequent approval of a shoreline zoning permit. That was, that was per the planning board. If you recall.
Yes.
So the logic behind it was if, if we didn't meet the criteria for a commercial permit, there was no sense in the expenditure for a shoreline zoning permit.
Okay.
So basically, he's basically asking, do we need to set a date on it? But I don't think we do, do we?
Well, I assume we want to wrap this all up, and I assume they want to even more so than we do.
Our backlog might be six months from now before we get to it.
We do have quite a backlog.
We have a code enforcement officer.
I mean, the reason I offer this condition is because we can't find that it can, this application conforms with. All town ordinances. Uh, given the fact that we don't have a shoreline zoning approval in hand.
I agree with that, but my thought was on just the setting a date by which they must. Submit. I'm assuming they can't con- consider this a. Uh, commercial development review permit that's valid until they get the shoreline zoning one. So do we need to set a date because? That they submit it, because they'd just be holding themselves back if they didn't act on it as soon as they could.
I guess I'd like to hear what Mike might have for advice to us.
Yep.
So there, there's sort of two parts to it, you know, in terms of. Putting a date at least to get in the queue, it, it might make some sense, and the reason I'm saying that is, as you know, the, the, the consent judgment. That we had required that they apply within a certain timeframe, frankly, I think, required that they. Get the, the permit within a certain timeframe, which has been extended for good reason, because of COVID, because of the backlog. Uh, as you said, I don't think we can put a date at this point on when they would obtain the final permit. But perhaps to, to move it along, you could probably put a reasonable deadline on, on when they, they should apply. And I'll just say that in so far, the select board has continued that agreement, just given the hardship. And, and at some point, they could change their mind, I suppose, but given how things have progressed over the past year. They've, they've allowed that to continue. But I think the issue lastly is, if they were to just continue to operate as they have been without pursuing the shoreline zoning permit. That would be an issue.
Yep. Put in a date, what would be a good reasonable date, you know?
May 1st.
Does that give them time?
I would have a hard time getting an application prepared in a month.
Right.
Last time the court gave us three months to do it. I mean, we can, I can try to get it as quickly as possible, but. Given my workload, I, I look, a month would be very difficult.
How about July 1?
That, that might work.
How about September?
That would be easier, but I'm sure the clients want to get going sooner than that.
Alright. I, I would just also add, I mean, the court didn't give 90 days, we agreed to it. And, uh, but again, having this process, having been underway now for. Since July, boy, 10 months, eight months, it, it's, it was pretty obvious that this had to be done. I understand the reason that the, that, that the grants didn't proceed, because they wanted to know the outcome of this. But it seems like moving it forward more quickly, and, and again, Jeff, I, by the way, I, I hear you on your, the limits of your. Uh, work time, I, I get it.
What do the applicants say, Samantha?
You know, I think within reasonable limits, you know, I think we have to consider what Jeff's availability is to, to do it. You know, when we first discussed this with the planning board, the planning board did concede that it would make sense to approve the commercial applicant. Application with the condition that a shoreline zoning permit be obtained subsequent to the. To the, to the application, so that was, that was, you know. Our initial meeting with the planning board, that was discussed and, and reviewed and the strategy that was approved. So, you know, I think a reasonable amount of time, whatever Jeff thinks, to submit it. Yeah, again.
That was my question as well.
I think, I think July would be easier, I would try to get it in before then, but July 1 would be acceptable to me.
I will note that the, you know, the. The, the recognizing this is a separate permit, but the home base permit does require that we. Operate within shoreline zoning guidelines, and that will not change.
So is the date July 1 acceptable to all then? I guess I'm looking at Jeff, because he's probably going to be workforce.
I, I can, I could live with that, that would be, that would be fine.
Hey, George?
Um, so I would amend my, my proposed condition to submitting the application. No later than July 1, 2021.
Okay.
A second.
Thank you, Craig. Any more discussion? All those in favor, so Pete?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
I'm in favor, five in favor, none opposed. Next up is Q on the document, which is probably. On the form. Maybe?
I think I've got a P, P on the form.
Yep.
There's what you said.
Yep.
Yep.
So Q, increase the phosphorus concentration in a great pond.
Here, there's a, yet, you know, that two inch era is in here as well, and I believe is the last place it shows up. Uh, it's about halfway down the second paragraph.
Got it.
And the, the reference to the square footage for the revegetated area goes from 1,200 square feet to. Forty, sixty, I believe.
Correct.
Okay. We did have quite a conversation about this earlier. Is there, first of all, is this, now that we've edited this, is this capturing the information correctly? Or are more edits needed? Pretty comfortable with it.
Oh, which one are we on now? Sorry.
Q on the document, which is increasing the phosphorus.
Okay, on the document, sorry, I'm trying to toggle back and forth.
It's hard, right? Trying to see both, it's hard. Um, okay, so we've made some edits, are we good with the language that we have in there, which summarizes everything that's been submitted and so on?
I believe so, yes.
Yeah, the only question I had on this particular thing, on Red Oak Lodge, was with grass and trees. I'm not sure that we said we were going to do trees, but grass or some sort of vegetation.
Peter?
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, that's in Jeff's middles in, in the application.
Okay.
Mister Chair?
I was referencing, I was thinking this was referencing the conversation that, that occurred outside of that, but.
And Mister Chair, just two other.
Yep.
Quick changes, again, the 1,200 square feet needs, needs to get changed to the 4360 or whatever it was.
Yep.
And. Two inches of topsoil needs to get changed to four.
Yes.
Yep.
We are in alignment on those, that's good. Are we good on this one? If so, I would entertain a motion on. On this topic about increasing. Go ahead, George.
So just conceptually, um, uh, I I mean, my motion will be that uh. Anyway, my motion will be to proceed, you know, that this will meet the ordinance, but with the same five conditions as the other. Surface water quality, uh, find the uh, uh, review criteria. So, uh, with that said, um. The board finds the project will not unreasonably increase the concentration of phosphorus in a great pond. Again, with those five conditions reiterated.
And I think, Michael, you had had some um, good language about um, how to reference those, so. As long as that's consistent here, I think that's applicable.
Yep. Well, I don't know what it was, but we'll uh, we we will, we will get it.
Okay.
George is going to get me the conditions in writing and then, uh, yes, we'll find a way to paraphrase those as. Specific five conditions, two through six or whatever, whatever it is.
Yep. Again, we're back to quilting. This is how we stitch it together. This is us. Alright, um, so we've got got a motion uh, on the floor with the conditions about the other five things being applicable. Here, um, uh, do we have a second?
Second.
And seconded, any more discussion? All those in favor, Pete?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
And I say yes, so five in favor, none opposed, based on that. Up is. Our outdoor material storage on the document should be Q on the form.
You got it, Peter.
Alright. Alright, so this is all the material storage topic. We've gone over a lot of this already, um, in sort of other conversations that blend into this.
Yeah.
I feel like some of this is um, repetitive from previous items.
Yeah, frankly, Peter, I was going to say that, uh, yeah, the the reference to the ordinance is again to Article Six, Section Five, which is. Precisely the one that we dealt with a while ago.
Yep, precisely. I I think, I I don't want to speak for anybody else, but are we ready for a motion on this one?
I have a question for Mike. Uh, Mike, maybe I'm. Going to say, um, being overly repetitive, but is it really necessary to? You know, when you're dealing with a similar subject matter, I mean, this is basically the same subject matter as under aesthetics. Standard, um, it all is interconnected on the ground, albeit not necessarily in these findings and uh. Is it necessary to keep on repeating the uh, conditions the way I've been doing it?
I think so, um, only because should we get to some dispute over those, it's it's good to have them in every, every section. It's probably going to make for a long document, um, but I I was trying to find a way, this is J K L, this was L on the form before. I was trying to find a creative way, I think what Peter maybe was getting at was make the motion to approve it. Uh, because that one, that one had lengthy conditions, didn't it, George? I think I see where you're going.
It did.
Yep. Um, what, what I'm going to suggest is that um, the motion would be to approve it. With the same conditions, and and again, assuming this is where the the committee wants to go, the board wants to go, same conditions as imposed. In section L of the of the form. I think we can understand that and then I can piece it together in writing.
Yes, George?
I'll make a motion, what he said.
Okay, alright, perfect.
Second.
Second, yes, thank you, Rich. Any more discussion? All those in favor, so Pete?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
And I'm yes, so five in favor, none opposed. That's relative to the outdoor materials storage topic. Next up is. Item S on the document, which should be, I guess, R on the form.
Falling, yes.
So title, right, and interest. Um, and we have submitted to us that the applicants have submitted deeds to the land upon which this development is proposed. Any more discussion on this? Hearing none, uh, I would entertain a motion on this one.
I make a motion that the applicant has submitted evidence of title right or our interest in this property.
Thank you. We have a motion, need a second.
Second.
Thank you, Pete. Any discussion? All those in favor, Pete?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Yes.
And Rich?
Yes.
I'm in favor, so it's five in favor. Opposed. And uh. I think we're on the last one, which is safe and adequate parking. Item T on the document should be S on the form. I know in the past, we've had a pretty healthy discussion about parking, including, um, we had talked to the applicants about going from. From two spaces that were what position one one way to ninety degrees from that, and Jeff, you had made those. Uh, changes before. Any other top, any other questions about this one, about this topic, Jeff?
No, I'd I'd made the changes on the plan as directed.
Yep, thank you. Is that it, it on the safe and adequate parking one? Go ahead, George.
Um, you ready for a motion, Peter?
I am.
So I I would make a motion, uh, that board finds the applicant, uh, does uh, provide for safe and adequate parking. Uh, with a condition, um, by June first, two thousand twenty-one, install fencing. Parking bumpers, wheel stops, or other parking barriers to prevent vehicles from parking directly from. The Hulan Road and in the public right of way of this town road.
Okay, so we have a motion with a condition.
I'm not sure what that means. Could you elaborate a little more?
Certainly, um, so a- as indicating the findings and and I think it was Sean that said, uh. So, uh, you know, just realigning the um, uh, parking spaces on paper, probably not going to have any effect in the real world. And so, and that uh, clients out of habit would probably uh, uh, still want to try to park right off. Uh, with direct access from the Hulan Road in the town right of way, both of which is not consistent with the ordinance. Uh, so, um, this attempts to deal with.
So you mean the parallel to the road on the e- edge of the road?
Correct.
I'm just, I'm just asking, can I pull up to my house and park like I always do? Really, I'm concerned about that most more, more than anything else.
Um, I don't know where you parks.
Right in front of the office door.
I don't know why you can't, it's just that you would be ninety degrees from. The Hulan Road.
Is that illegal? Like if I pull in from the Hulan Road and park right in front of the garage office, I'm just checking because this matters to me.
Well, you know, the. This is sort of uh, like privately owned boats versus commercial boats.
Yeah.
I guess, um.
That's my parking space. I don't care if there's customers there, they're getting out.
I believe that uh, it uh.
I plug in my hybrid van there, I'm just saying.
I don't think this, I'd say I don't think that's really part of the application that where she parks in her personal property.
Okay.
Right, um.
So I guess I I, well, I clarification on on like, wh- what type of?
So, so maybe let me take a step back. What I'm trying to accomplish is to ensure. That in reality, your patrons, um, when using those two parking spaces. That Jeff has realigned, uh. Oh, uh, so that they're parallel to the Hulan Road rather than perpendicular to the Hulan Road. And so access is off your interior driveway rather than off the uh, off the Hulan Road. That people out of habit won't just go bombing across and and park the way they always have. Uh, which is not consistent with the uh, uh, ordinance, so that they're backing into or uh. The Hulan Road, they're parking on this, on the town right of way. Um, and the only means I can think of to accomplish that is. The use of, and and the ordinance provides for this is use of uh, bumpers or some kind of barrier that prevents cars from just. Doing that.
Well, what about signage?
Do you think your patrons would follow it?
Yeah. We've told them not to park across the street and they don't.
And they read?
You know, I don't know, Peter. I'm hoping so, but you know. Generally, yes, you know, generally, they're pretty willing to follow directions. I I you did, i- it's a, I I think that, you know, you're always going to have people that. The bigger issue with our parking is not the people that are our customers, it's the people on Fourth of July weekend that want to go downtown to watch the fireworks. That overload our area, park on our lawn, um. Picnic on the docks without permission, you know, it's it it's. It's really not so much the regular customers, it's more the general town. You know, if we, if we tell them, if we have customers and we tell them where to park, they're pretty compliant to it.
And I think down in the village, uh, across some days. Uh, people who have a, have an island and they have a house right across from day, they have a sign there. And people do adhere to the sign and they, they uh, they follow the rules. Signage is good enough, I think.
You know, and if we find that that doesn't work, you know, we're certainly willing to, but I think that, you know. I- it's not, it's not so much a high volume, people, you know, people come if we tell, we tell them that, like I said, the bigger offenders are the people that aren't related to us. That are. Looking for a place to park in the middle of the summer that's close access to town. That are looking for a public parking that they can't find. Or that, you know, think that we're part of a, a part of the public way or the Seven Lakes Alliance or something like that. We do get a fair bit of that, but that's. Not part of this permit. Town crowd control is not part of this permit.
Right. Um, so we have a motion on the floor with um, some conditions, I. Rich, how do you feel about, um? I guess signs, because that was not part of the condition.
No, I I was just wanted to review the ordinance for a moment, uh, I wanted the rest of you to discuss it a little bit.
Sure, okay. Craig, did you have something to say? I saw.
No. It is going to impede, I mean, you do put barriers up, it is going to impede getting into the boat workshop with boats.
And probably other Hulan Road traffic, because it is a one road, if you put up barriers, it's. Create congestion, because quite often related to us, if people are, if two-way traffic is going not related to us, it's going up and down that road. They will pull into the right of way on our property. To to pass each other. Just because it is a one lane road.
Barrier is also a, a good snow pile hitters.
Yeah, it's, um, I don't see anything that would uh, not allow us to, um. Um, use signs. So I'd be willing to amend my uh, um, motion to uh. Require signage to instructing. Um, patrons to park uh, off of the interior driveway. So maybe I should reword that, huh? So, uh, by July first, uh, June first, uh, two thousand twenty-one. Uh, install signage, instructing, uh. Vehicles on, not to park directly from the Hulan Road and not in the public right of way.
Okay, it's explicit.
Happy to do that, that's easy.
Do you get that? Okay, Michael?
Doing all right, yep.
A second.
Thank you, Craig. Any more discussion? So, all those in favor, Pete?
Uh, yes.
George?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
And I'm in favor of that, so five in favor, none opposed. Okay. So, Michael, I'd like to turn to you from a, from a logistical point of view, we've got. Um, again, quite a lot of pieces that we've been trying to knit together for this, you know, our quilting project is large here, so. So I think you, maybe, do you have a recommendation for us at this point?
So, uh, yes, but after one other thing, um, and there's probably good reason George didn't put this in his memo. Um, but on the form, there's also a T. Um, and hopefully, I I I breathed, I took a deep breath, um, but. Section T uh, just requires a board to find that the project uh, will conform or will not conform to other provisions under Article Seven. Um, George might even be able to chime in, I don't believe any of them are applicable. Um, it deals with specific. Oh, I just had it, just had it open.
Uh, it it's a land uses like, um, wind towers.
Mineral extraction.
Yeah, right, and and none of that applies to this proposal.
Okay. So, we should probably have a motion though, are you thinking?
Uh, only because it's on the form, I think, um, uh. And I think it probably should be a motion that uh, it will conform to all applicable provisions. Um, of Article Seven, because none of them are applicable, and we might even make a finding that none of them are applicable.
Understood. I'd entertain a motion, George?
Um, so I'd make a motion to find that the project uh, will conform. Uh, and with respect to, uh, based on. Uh, that Article Seven is not applicable to this proposal.
Thank you. So we have a motion, I need a second.
Okay.
Thank you, Rich. Any more discussion? All those in favor, Pete?
Uh, yes.
George?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
I'm in favor. So five in favor, none opposed.
So then, thank you, Peter. Good for clarification. And then I think and I'd also defer to how you usually do this, but where I think we are, based on the votes, every item, every, every criteria was found to be met, subject to conditions. I don't think we want to take a final vote at this point. What I would propose is that I go back, make the edits, probably get some information from George and from the, from the minutes on these conditions, so we can frame those into a final document. And then come back and hopefully fairly quickly review it and then take a final vote to approve with the conditions. That would be my, my proposal.
I like that idea.
Second. Third is whatever.
Michael, will, will I have the opportunity to, to, to review that document for accuracy too?
You don't think I'd be accurate? Um, yes. I'm hoping, and we can have this discussion, is, do you have another meeting in two weeks?
Yes.
My, my plan would be that we could get this together within two weeks. You could put it on that agenda, hopefully, and vote on it fairly quickly, that it would go out with a packet. So that, that you'd have a chance to see it. Certainly Roger and Samantha and Sean, you know, if we can get it out ahead of time, we'll try to get it out as quick as we can. But I think probably with more help from my assistant than anything, trying to fill in this form, we can get that done. George did so, I mean, we can just cut and paste. The conditions will be, we'll have to make sure we get those worded correctly.
I certainly can get the email you, the, those conditions in the next two days.
Yep.
Peter, I would just remind you that we have KB cog coming on that meeting, but I don't, really, there shouldn't be, this shouldn't take much time, I wouldn't think. I mean, we've done the hard work tonight.
Absolutely. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I, I, I agree. I think, I think it would not be at all lengthy.
Seems to me like all the, the content has been approved and we're in agreement and it will just be the verbiage, the final verbiage, it's up for consideration.
Yeah. And by not voting tonight, obviously there is no final decision. So as far as deadlines and that sort of thing, because we haven't voted on the overall application.
So let's head in that direction with this. So we should be good to go there. So that's what we'll aim to do. This is very important. We can try to make happen, maybe do KV cog first, or if that makes sense.
I would do this first.
Do this one first and then KV cog. All right. So we'll have to do, all right.
Thank you all.
You're welcome. Thank you, everybody. And as we still have a little bit more to do, I've got one question for you, and I think we have got minutes from last time to still deal with. So thank you, everybody. Roger, Kate's, my agents, really appreciate.
Thank you, Michael.
There's a lot of hard work. Thank you, Roger. Thank you, Jeff.
All did a good job.
Thank you, planning board. Greg, George, Peter.
Very welcome.
Thank you, Michael.
Thanks all. Peter, you done with me?
Yes, sir. I think we're, we're good to go.
Okay.
Do our couple of other business items, so.
I still have to drive home. So thanks, everybody.
All right. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night. So George, I wanted to thank you so much for all the work that, that you did. I, I was trying to count up the hours that it may have taken and it's, it's not a small amount. I know, just, just reviewing the stuff, after you've already put in a lot of work, it must have been a full workday at least, maybe a day and a half, I don't know.
Time and a half.
Okay.
About a week, geez.
Oh, man. Thank you. Very thorough. Um, all right. So we'll deal with this one when we meet next, which is good. We have a couple of big things to, I want to make sure to ask everybody here.
For a moment, I just want to make sure that all the board understands why I was involved. I was asked by a combination of town manager, Michael and Peter to draft the fine, findings for you guys, you know, for all of you to discuss. So it wasn't something I volunteered for.
So, so thank you for doing that because that helped synthesize a lot of the things together for each of the topics. That was helpful. So just wanted everybody to know, we have, you know, you probably saw the email from, I think it was either Sheila or Julie, that our backlog's pretty big. Anthony asked me if, I would ask this board if we, we'd be interested in having a special meeting, an extra meeting in April to help deal with the backlog of shoreline zone permits. So it, I hate to ask, but I have to. Is there interest in doing that?
Well, I'd like to, but I can't. I don't have time to do it. So I can take classes and I'm working full time.
I hear you, Pete. I do, I do. Anybody else that, do we have?
I mean, I, I'm retired, so I would defer to those of you that are working for a living.
Okay. And, and if we had even just a quorum, I could probably do it.
Well, I, I'd be willing to do it. You know, in terms of, even if we only have three people, but you know, again, I, I would defer to those of you that are, that work for a living.
So it, it would, it would be hard for me to, to do it. Unless coincided with something else that was a day off, but I don't see that happening from my end anyway, during the day between eight and five.
So Peter, if I could just weigh in for a second here.
Hi, Anthony.
We anticipate a, a fifth board member being appointed to the board next week and she, she may be amenable to, to having a special meeting. Let me talk with her about that. And if that's the case, then I'll report back to the full board and see if there might be days or times. I don't even think it necessarily has to be at nighttime. For instance, where we could at least just, you know, bang out a, a couple of applications because I'm just afraid we're getting to a point where we may never get our heads above water.
Right, yeah. I, I hear you. I do.
On the other hand, Anthony, just, you know, we don't want to throw to the wolves without enough time to become familiar with the ordinance and all that kind of stuff.
I, I hear you, but she's a bright woman, so hopefully she can, and she's very dedicated and enthusiastic. So hopefully she can at least get a, get herself familiar, if not intimately familiar with the ordinance.
Right. No, you're right about that.
And I'm thinking about, you know, really and truly just trying to tackle some of the, the low hanging fruit. Maybe some of the very simple shoreline applications that we have before us at the moment, just to help clear some of the backlog.
And a quorum for us is what? Just three members?
That's correct, Rich.
Yeah.
And I, I would offer this, that if it were Thursday of the month, I could, I could take time off at like 3:00 PM to be available for a, a meeting. If we could start at three rather than doing it at night, if that, if that helps.
That might help.
Just offer it up anyway. But I just need time to, between now and then.
I mean, my preference would be to do it in April rather than once fishing season starts.
Right.
I'm willing to do the extra meeting. No matter what time, as long as I'm not doing something else on my schedule already.
I know. I hear you. All right. So Anthony, it sounds like we, we have a, a firm maybe about late, late April.
Okay, I'll talk with Sarah next week and get back to you guys.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. All right. So that was that one. Do we have the meeting minutes from the last meeting?
We do.
Package, hang on.
Somewhere.
Yeah. Oh, are they? In the 84 pages of our board packet, is it early or late? Or was it separate? I apologize.
It, it was part of the same package. I, I can't remember exactly where in the packet.
I'm just scrolling through it. Okay, I think I found it. Page 42 of 84.
I'm making motion that George go through his edits and he probably got everything covered.
I don't have any edits. I was fresh out of time. No, I, I, no, I, I looked them over. I didn't find anything wrong. But I'm not good at finding the typos and poor language, like some of the rest of you are.
I would say if you've gone through it and don't have anything, it's in pretty good shape.
No, Julie did a nice job of capturing the list of 10 items that Roger Kate said.
Right. That was big. That's probably, to me, one of the biggest things.
Yeah, no, it was the bottom line.
Yeah. Um, the, the only thing I would say where it says, the April 4th, 2021 meeting will go over the entire application. Probably it should be edited to say the April 1, 2021. We don't have a meeting on the 4th, do we?
No. That's an extra meeting they were talking about, Peter.
So that's my only suggested edit right there.
That's kind of an important one.
Anybody else have anything? If not, I'd entertain a motion on the minutes.
Make a motion, we approve the minutes as amended.
Okay. On motion and seconded. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Pete?
Yes.
Yes, George?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
As a blink means yes, right? So five in favor, the minutes are approved as amended. Um, and is Gary's not here any longer? He was in here before.
Heard anything about any prospects lately?
I have not. I just wanted to thank him for all the work that he's done for the planning board. This is, he knows better than anybody. We've had some, these marathon meetings, he's helped out a lot. So so I'm just very appreciative of all he's done. So I don't know when his last day is or anything. I have no idea. Does anybody else know?
No, I thought it was the third.
Oh, really? And
I'm not sure. I'm not a hundred percent, but I think that's what it was.
All right.
I thought maybe it would be the end of next week, but I, I also don't know.
Yeah. I don't know if there's anything, any gift that we could get for him or, or what? I don't know. I don't know what. And I'll check in with Anthony and see if there's something.
Chip in to get a gift card or something from L Bean or someplace like that, maybe.
Yeah, that wouldn't be bad, right? I mean, be good, good to get stuff that he, he likes and hunting stuff is always good. So fishing stuff. It's all good.
Hunting stuff.
Yeah.
All those good, all those good toys.
Yeah, I know.
Get him a new beagle.
Yeah.
I didn't know he had beagles.
I think he's a, I think he's a snowshoe hare hunter.
Oh, really? Oh. That's too much like work.
Especially around here, I can't find any.
All right. Um, is there anything else that we need to discuss tonight before we head, head on out for the night? Any of the news or anything?
Are you going out tonight, Peter?
Uh, no, but I'm taking tomorrow off from work, which is good. Yeah. I have some, some errands to do. And my wife said, you know, you put in, you know, after you get back from work, which is, means I just turned from this computer. Right? You know, you put in a four hour day or more, almost going on five hour day after work. So once, maybe once a year, take the next day off. So I said, that's a great idea. So tomorrow I'm taking it off. I have some errands to do, so I'll work on stuff instead. Um, I wanted to thank you all for all the hard work. This has been very challenging and it's been very demanding. So thank you all for everything.
Nice job, Pete.
Thanks, Pete. I mentioned this before, Pete, really, it's, it's really the, the strength of what each of you bring that make it work. What it's all about. And the fact we've got talented people with all kinds of perspectives really helps bring this whole thing together. And, and without that, it wouldn't, it wouldn't work. So. Gentlemen, have a great night. We'll talk to you later. Maybe I'll see you on email or anything.
Good night all.
Good night.